Okay, good morning. I'm Commissioner Ed Rothstein and it's Thursday, November 3rd. Believe we have a pretty full agenda for open session this morning. Can't believe it's November. Just remember to change your clocks this weekend. I know that and hopefully everybody had a healthy Halloween although it a bit wet. Let's, as we always do, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence before we begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as we always do, let's start with Priority Carolina. I believe I have one proclamation this morning. Commissioner Boucher?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We have a nice full house today. Thanks for attending. I want to start off, as always, welcoming new employees to the county. We have Lindsey Pereira, Collection Specialist, Collections Office; Pharoah Solomon, Enterprise GIS Analyst, Technology Services; Kyle Thornton, Emergency Communications Specialist, Public Safety; and Christopher Stately, Public Safety Technician. Mr. Swam has anything up here to share with the public? Oh, I want out, here you go, for Halloween, I went out to the Career Technology Center. For first time, I went into their new site that's been built and they had their big country breakfast. I'm always about the food. The kids did a wonderful job. They also did pumpkin decorations. There's some of the work that the students did. It was a very festive environment. It's very important for the students to have us come in and support them financially. So there was donations, be involved with this breakfast. And that money goes to help the students compete in the state and also the National Skills Olympics. And this is very important to me because in 1985, I was part of Vocational Skills Olympics. I was the number one student, weltered and stated me on competing nationally. So to be able to give back to the community and support these students out there who are going to be the future of our county and the jobs and the leadership and the businesses, it's a tremendous honor to be part of that. I believe I even seen their former controller, Rob Burke, out there. You have a photo of Mr. Burke. I don't know if I sent that, but I ran into him at the entrance. It's always good to see our former employees here at other events being supportive. Do we have anything else, Mr. Swam?
I have some.
Is that it? Alright, oh, here we, here we have, this is Dwight Amos, our landfill manager. I wanted this slid in here. I had the Department of Public Works come to my office this week to discuss something that's on our agenda. And I told Dwight Amos he could sit in the commissionership and be the commissioner for about five minutes. He was a pretty good boss to me. I just want to express my sincere appreciation to this man here, Dwight Amos. He's been instrumental in helping us get a grasp and understanding on the needs of our landfill. And I can't give him enough praise. I believe he's been a county employee for over 42 years. He's a wealth of knowledge. And I just want to share my appreciation to everyone in Department of Public Works. Thank you very much.
And he graduated from THE Francis Scott Key High School.
There you go.
Should be no question as to his competence and intelligence level. Just saying. Sorry, go ahead.
Were you talking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you biased?
I don't know. What's your name? Commissioner Weaver.
Okay, first of all, I just, you mentioned the tech center and Commissioner Rothstein. I did stop by the tech center one day to look at some of the things they've done. It is beautiful what they have out there. And I think that's going to be, just add on to the asset we have in Carroll County. And we were at the hospital last week for the Stroke Smart program after session. Really interesting what's going on with the, at the hospital with that program. They had a little magnets that were handing out on, you know, the symptoms and what, how it works. And it really, I did put it on the refrigerator just to look at it because if you can get the first few hours, get help after a stroke, it can be a major difference. And so, anyway, that was a very good program. I'll let you talk about the proclamation you presented here in a few minutes on it. And as I said, this is after Halloween. We do change time again here, so I hate that. But anyway.
Been getting rid of.
We're going back.
Apparently they're working on it, right?
I think it passed. My understanding is it passed. So we'll fall back this year, we'll spring forward in the spring, and then that's it, suppose it, I think.
I hope, anyway.
Cool.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, that's good. I'm just hoping they did. About six years ago, we tried to get Carroll not to do it, just Carroll. Somebody told us, no, you can't do that.
Commissioner Frazier. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just kind of going with this.
Don't have much to add. The be smart for the smoke, the stroke, smoke, for the stroke.
That's the first sign.
Don't ask me to repeat a phrase. Don't do that. Was well worth going over there and, you know, hearing from the people at the hospital about strokes and so forth. And, and what Commissioner Weaver already said, having someone get help within the first, I think it's three, three and four and a half hours, is extremely important to the rehabilitation, how much they can recover from that. So it's very, very important. And one thing that they emphasized was, if you think someone is having a stroke, think, just go. Go to the hospital, have them check you out. If you're not having a stroke, it's fine. They don't, they won't yell at you. If you are, it might say, it might make your recovery just be so much better. So it's very, very worthwhile, you know, just to go. A lot of people are afraid to go, I think I'm having a heart attack, stroke, whatever, now I'm not going to go. And it's too late. If you think something's going on, go to the hospital, go to the emergency room, find out, get the facts.
Do not lay down and take a nap.
No, no.
And that's what, that's what, that's what folks do.
Because they, oh, I think I'll lay down, take a nap, and I'll feel better when I wake up. Okay? Possibly not. On a personal note, as many of you know, I still coach, you know, in the afternoons, I coach middle school across country. We just wrapped up our season over at Gerstel Academy. I have to say, I had the top runner in our league, Ben Miller, I put his name out there. He won every single race this year. And not only did he win every single race, most of the time, you couldn't even see the person coming in second because that's how far ahead he was. His closest race, the kid was 24 seconds behind him, which is a good distance. Most of the time, he finished over a minute, minute and a half ahead of second place person. Tremendous runner for an eighth grader, really looking for great things for him at the high school level. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wentz.
Was that due to the coaching?
I didn't want to say that out loud since you brought it up.
He had the bicycle right, you know.
That's all I have, just a, yeah. Good, good morning. Been riding ambulances for 47 years. I've taken a lot of stroke patients to a lot of places. And what Carroll Hospital Center is doing is amazing, as always. So kudos to all of the folks over there. Not only is it the hospital, but it's, it's the, it's the folks that are serving on the, what's the name of the, that dot's in charge of, Fox?
Partnership.
The what?
Partnership for Healthier Carol.
Healthier Carol. Thank you, Celine. Yeah, everybody, everybody that was involved with that or is involved. So thank you to all. Here is your Charles Carroll Community Center update for the morning. Since we were up there last, things are really changing. This is inside the, the new auditorium, or the new gymnasium, sorry. Serious, serious into drywalling and getting ready to paint. Keep going, Chris. What else you got? It was interesting because for the first time in probably the history of Silver Run, there was a crane in the air two weeks ago. And it, it apparently created a ruckus. Were you involved in that ruckus, Keith? Okay, alright. Because typically where there's a ruckus, and you're involved, just saying. Anyway, the crane came in and put that air handling system down. And it apparently, again, had a lot of spectators up there because folks have never seen anything like that in Silver Run. What else you got? There's the, you guys are all familiar with this because we took the tour. There weren't walls there when we were there. There are walls there now. And then finally, on the outside, you know, there's the multipurpose rooms. This is, yeah, keep going, Chris, the next one. Here's the, here's the wall that's outside that's going to have a bench on it. The flagpoles are going to be there. And all of that brick is from the old Charles Carroll School. So we're, we're putting in as much history from the old school as we can. When you walk into the lobby, you'll be walking on the old gymnasium floor from Charles Carroll. As you approach the display case, that will have a lot of items from the old school. So we're, we're putting in as much history there as we can. And I know a lot of members of the community have been going up there. They're anxious to see it. Still looking, probably Kirk is going to probably hit me for this, but I think, I think maybe April-ish, we're looking, hopefully, March or April. But it's coming along real well. And you know it's coming along when I was able to pull right up to the front door and park the other day. And actually, either today or yesterday, they were going to put the first level of blacktop up there. So really, I want to say kudos to everybody again. I know you probably get tired of hearing me say this, but this is one of the legacies that I will leave, leaving this office. And Dick, for your purposes, today's count is 31 and 4. I always want to give that to you. He knows what I'm talking about. But this is going to be an amazing addition to the community up there. And not just that community, but as Commissioner Rothstein has said many times, it's all about Carroll. And there'll, there'll be people there from far and near utilizing this impressive building. So thank you to, especially Kirk Engel. He'll be in here later on today because there's a couple items that we have to address. But to everybody that was involved in making this become a reality. So, other than that, kudos to Doug Brown and DPW yesterday. They had a good winter weather coordination meeting. We do it better than anybody in the state when it comes to snow removal and being prepared for winter weather. So kudos to the folks there. And stay safe out there. Supposed to be a beautiful weekend. So stay safe out there. As you said last week, leaves are coming down, slippery surfaces on the road. We had several accidents in the past two, three days. Some of them were, one of them was pretty bad. So slow down and respect those that are out there on the road that are on our ambulances, fire engine, and police cars.
No, I appreciate it. And one of the, you know, deeds and not just words to live by is don't take yourself so serious. Take the job you do very seriously. And I had the opportunity this past week to attend the Good Scout Breakfast over at Howard County. And our Good Scout Breakfast will be in December. And I look forward to attending that. But the Good Scout in Howard County, for many years, was emceed by a gentleman named Dick Story. And I think, Chris, you have that picture? There you go, of Dick and I. And many folks in the community know Dick. He was part of Carroll County. He was part of Howard County. He lives down in Berlin now. He did not emcee it this year. He has been a mentor of mine for many, many years. He's going through some very challenging times. His wife basically says, day by day. And, but he has that, that smile and that just really warm, warm heart. So he's, he's a very special man and leader and mentor to everybody that he's come across. So.
And an incredible voice.
An incredible voice. He had that booming voice. So, yeah, pretty special. Another mentor and friend is, I believe somebody's birthday was the other day, yesterday maybe? Chris, do you have something we can share? Oh, there he is. Who's the guy with hair? Wait, go back.
Bring it back, Chris.
Chris, I didn't see that. Okay, now let's just see how we can.
You haven't changed at all.
Get this out. Okay, we're going to get there. Just bear with me.
Seriously?
Okay. Little bit more.
Seriously, this, this is Priority Carol. Seriously.
This is Priority. I haven't seen that much hair. I mean, look at that. Look at that.
That just means we love you.
That is THE Francis Scott Key.
I want everybody in the room, you know, and the thousands of viewers, that I choose to cut my hair like this. Thank you all very much.
I haven't aged a bit.
It's a little special. I have it on my block.
That's not the question. 5'8"?
I know.
There ain't no 5'8".
They had platform shoes back then. I remember them.
So, so a happy belated birthday to our friend and colleague.
I'll respond to that in the form of a question. Thank you?
Yeah, we're not sure about that. So, okay. Chris, you can take that down because on a more serious note, I have the opportunity to provide a proclamation. It's called Operation Green Light for Veterans Week. And Secretary Owings and Deputy Secretary Finn and I were together a couple of weeks ago. And we were talking about this and how to continue to promote this across Maryland. This is a national opportunity to recognize our veterans leading into Veterans Day on the 11th. And we'll talk more about that, you know, we could talk more about that next week. But Operation Green Light, and we're going to light up our county building, starting on the 7th and go through the 13th. And I have a proclamation, that's what the lighting is going to look like. I'm very impressed the partnership with our facilities guys in making this happen. Because there's a lot of technical pieces to making it look green. Because there's a lot of technical pieces to making it look green. And now having the ability to make it look whatever color we do want it. So, uh, what I'd like is to get maybe the three of you, come on up here at the table. Uh, Bill, Elaine, yeah. And, uh, I'll take a minute reading the proclamation. I know we have a team behind you because it takes a village to take care of our veterans. And we know that. And Bill Nash is the chairman of the Veterans Advisory Committee, where, um, both Commissioner Weaver and I truly enjoy participating, um, in, and, uh, you know, you definitely make a difference. So. Yeah, Jack, why don't you, yeah, thanks. Why don't you come on up and just put your chair? That's okay. Yeah, that'll work. Thanks. Okay, the proclamation. Thanks, Dick. Um, Operation Green Light for Veterans Week, November 7th, 2022, November 13th, 2022. There's a whole lot of whereases, which I'm not going to be saying, but that's okay. I'll start off with whereas. The residents of Carroll County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And Carroll County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as Carroll County Veteran Service Officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than 2, $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. An estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life and active military service. Members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during the first year after military service. And the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And the Board of Carroll County Commissioners appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, we, the Board of County, Carroll County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Monday, November 7th through Sunday, November 13th, uh, 2022, as Operation Green Light for Veterans Week. And, uh, it's about deeds and not words. It's about action. And you show that every day, um, in what you do. So, uh, I just want to say from me to you, I appreciate all that you're doing. And also all that still needs to be done. And we don't cower away from it and we don't hide behind it. We hit it on front and, and center. So, uh, I, I do appreciate that because we still have a whole lot of work to do. You know, and I've talked about my endeavors, um, and I just, whatever you need from us, you just keep us in mind and, and let us know. So with that said, does.
Well, nobody does it better than Carroll County. You guys are part of that, why it happens in Carroll. Eight years ago, I was just elected back in the office here. Mike Mad Dog Sater was in, I think, the first week. And Weaver, my, your office now. And I'm like, and Mike and I grew up together. We knew each other very well. And he made me promise to keep moving with what he had started with the Veterans Council. And it was, uh, just an infant organization at that time, or Advisory Council. And, uh, he, uh, no, he's no longer with us, but, uh, we have carried on. I think what I promised him that we would do, and, uh, you guys have made a big, been a big, big part of that to get it to this point. We have the Veterans Celebration in Carroll County. We have a lot of things going on here that have just, uh, phenomenal in Carroll. And I know, uh, Secretary Owens and Deputy Secretary Flynn recognize Carroll County and what they've done, uh, for veterans here in the county. And you guys, I just want to say thank you and all the events you have and being part of Post 200. I, uh, uh, do see a lot of those events, maybe more than some of the others, but thank you. I really appreciate.
And a lot of credit, honestly, before I pass it on, Doug Howard, Commissioner Doug Howard, you know, in initiating the Veterans Council. Frank Valenti, uh, besides just being the chair, giving up his space over in Social Services. Ed Kramer, uh, I mean, great friends and just, uh, colleagues that have stepped up to make a difference, that initiate this along with Mad Dog and, and you. So any other comments?
If I may, I want to thank you all for your leadership in this. I know there's a lot of other people behind you. As this seems to happen in these situations, you all have provided leadership to the community. I hear time and time again from veterans how Carroll County is a place they want to live. And that's reflective of our community's values. Also want to give thanks to Commissioner Rothstein for his advocacy and leadership on this issue. He brings a lot to the table. Someone who's experienced what you've experienced. And that leadership produces dividends in how we are as a county and our quality of life. Thanks to everyone.
Well, I can't say enough that's not already been said. Uh, and I promised you, Dick, right after you had that meeting with Mad Dog, that I would make sure that I supported you and your efforts back in 2014 when we first started this adventure that you and I have been on. Uh, and we, we do, we do that. Listen, I wasn't in the military. Uh, I had a choice back in 1979 and went the other way into public safety. But I appreciate the sacrifices that all of you have made, uh, over the years. Coming from a paramilitary organization, uh, I understand it because I've seen the sacrifices that my brothers and sisters have made too. So to all of you, uh, if it was up to me, we'd have the green light on 24/7. Uh, because we're here because of what you all have done for us. And we can't ever forget that. So, uh, I have a tremendous amount of respect. We haven't always agreed over the last eight years on things, um, Dick and I. But, um, I, I respect the fact that he is a veteran. And then when Ed came on board, uh, the respect I have for him is, is, uh, beyond, uh, what folks can imagine. So to everyone, uh, we can't, we can't stop. We got to continue. Uh, I saw, I saw, uh, my wife showed me a Facebook post last night from a veteran in Tawny Town that is, was asking for, is there anybody around that I can just talk to and play cards with? That they moved here. So, uh, I'm pretty sure someone else saw that as well and they're on that. If not, I'm going to forward that. But that's what we need to do. And that's what this kind of thing is out to light so that folks do understand that. So, uh, thank you, thank you, thank you to all of you. And we'll, I'll continue to thank you till my dying day. And it's always good to see you, neighbor.
Thank you.
Uh, Dennis, did you want to chime in or just?
I haven't had a talk.
He's choked on.
Oh. You okay?
Yeah, it's just.
I mean, you want, you want a hug? I mean, I, I, I'm not sure what's going on here.
I will say, okay.
Got touched by the.
He did.
I will say, having grown up in a military family, because my father was in the service, and I see the sacrifices that were made by him and things he had to do when he, he was in the Coast Guard, when he went on ship and so forth. He was gone for a month or six weeks or a couple of months at a time and come back. And sacrifices have to be made. I do appreciate everything that, that the military's done for this country. Thank you very much.
Okay, Bill, it's up to you now. Sparkle us with your words.
On behalf of the Veterans Advisory Council, all the veterans of Carroll County and the American Legions in Carroll County, uh, we'd like to thank the commissioners for your support, continued support, and for the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything else, you guys? Elaine, please?
I'm Jack Bowersock. I'm Post Commander of Post 200 over in Hampstead. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you people for this. Because 55 years ago, when we started coming up from Vietnam, we didn't get anything like this. And it's great to see it. It took, took too long, I'm sure you can agree, but we do appreciate it. Majority of our members are Vietnam veterans and they appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Elaine?
Well, I only spent 30 years in the Marine Corps, but if I could have done more, I would have. But I really appreciated what I have seen in this county, what we do for veterans. And I am now on the Maryland's Veterans Commission down in Annapolis. And, uh, and I see what they're doing at that level for the, for veterans. And if we ever need any help at this, at this level, we can, we can get it. We can get some help. And like I said, we're working on that, uh, next, uh, Veterans Home here in the, in the county. And it's, it's moving forward.
It is. And, um.
And now, because of Secretary Owens, he's put me on the, uh, we're doing a, we've never had a woman's memorial or, or monument in this county, uh, to speak of. And, and he put me on that committee. So now we're working on that. And that's going to be a long haul because you have to fundraise her, get a designer, get her architied and all that. You know, and of course, one of the things we were talking about, maybe putting it at that, uh, at the Sykesville Veterans Home as an entrance way or something like that, but.
That'd be cool.
It would be nice, but, uh, we want to put it someplace where everybody would see it. So maybe it'll probably be in the capital area in Annapolis, I guess. But there's a lot of things we're doing for veterans in this county.
So you're, you're talking about a memorial for the state or for the county?
For the state.
Oh, for the state?
For the state. Yeah, a state, because they don't have a woman's monument of any kind. And, uh, so now Governor Hogan, he has signed a proclamation.
Right.
They have that done. So we'll be getting some funds from that level. But, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of roads that, and we've got Jan Struggs, who everybody's known that name, who had something to do with starting the Vietnam Memorial down in, uh, DC. He's going to be helping us on this committee to help us with all the struggles that's ahead because he's been there and done that. So. So we're doing a lot of things and I appreciate what we, what we're doing here in this county. It's great.
No, I appreciate, and just for the good of the group, the Veterans Home that you mentioned. And I've said a few times, 65% funded by feds, 35 by state, zero by the county, which I like very much. Uh, the workforce, um, has the opportunity to come from the county, especially from the community college when it comes to, uh, nurses and, uh, other, uh, staff. It'll be about 140 beds, about 165 million dollar facility. That's going to be down Slacks Road. And, you know, I was talking to the secretary, it'd be great to do some groundbreaking with at least A and E, Architecture and Engineering, uh, by April. So, uh, we're, I know, also talking to others in the Fed about, um, additional funds for that. So great initiative and, uh, yeah, that's good stuff. So.
I didn't know if you were going to mention about the, another dedication of a road for Colonel Weber. It's coming up here on the.
Saturday.
Yes. Yeah. And it, um, Deputy Secretary Finn and I are going to attend that for him.
And so will Commissioner Weaver with a proclamation.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's pretty special. And, uh, and that goes out to everyone as well. Roads, bridges, have the opportunity to dedicate them in memory of those that have served and others that have been put into, uh, honorable positions given their lives. Everyone who thanks me for my service, I turn around and thank them for giving me a reason to serve. And that's what this is really all about. So, um, okay, why don't we, uh, get a happy snap? I think we got a whole lot of folks. Uh, like I said, it takes a village. So Celine, why don't you bring your team up as well and while us stand back here.
Do you want to introduce them maybe and talk a little bit about what, I don't know. Nah. No?
Nah. Sounds like my granddaughter. Nah.
Come up here, guys.
Will you up here in the center? Yeah. Yeah, you and Bill, just in the middle. Gina?
I was over here.
Gina? Yeah. Are we lopsided now? We got too many people over there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Yes, sir. Nope, it's on you. We'll get there. Thanks. Okay, just, um. Real quick, before we get into the order of business, and I, I apologize, um, just one other, um, Chris, you got that photo? I apologize. So this is a woman, Silva, um, forgot her last name. She just passed away, uh, out of Pikesville. She was part of Schindler's List and, uh, was a Holocaust survivor. And I had the honor of having her on Fort Meade, having a conversation. I didn't even know this picture was taken. It was, uh, in the Baltimore Sun this morning. So I'm getting these calls about picturing the Baltimore Sun, and I'm like, okay, what is this about? And, uh, she was, I think, one of about 1,200 from my recollection of Schindler's List, that went through hell and back. And, um, yeah, she passed, I think, just either yesterday or the day before. I just wanted to share that again. Pretty special. So thanks, Chris. Let's start with Mr. Hein, Financial Assurance Plan Required by Maryland Environment. The FAP.
This is the public hearing.
It's a public hearing. I apologize. You're right. So who's going to start it? Mr. Burke, you want to start it or Chris?
I can start it. Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. So we were before you last week to talk about the Financial Assurance Plan for the National Pollute Discharge Elimination System permit that we have. And as we discussed last week, this is essentially an accounting exercise where, um, we document for the state that we are, um, that the county is providing the funds necessary to meet our permit requirements. And so we went last week through, um, the details of that. And then the, uh, state requirements are that we hold a public hearing. And then you approve the Financial Assurance Plan for, uh, submission to the state for their review and approval as well. So today, um, we're here to hear any public comments. And as usual, um, I guess we would hold the record open for 10 days and then we would be back before you requesting your approval of the plan.
Okay. Before we go into public, do we have any questions?
I move the Board of Carroll County Commissioners.
We haven't had the hearing yet.
Oh, no. That's it. Okay, I'm sorry.
Do we have any questions and then see if there's anybody in the public to discuss? Is there anybody here? Is there anybody on the phone, Chris?
I have no callers.
Okay. Now with that said, unless there's any questions.
No, I don't have any. I think the presentation was good. It was, you know, uh, I had no questions after I reviewed it as well. So I think we're good to go. So, so if you want to go with it, Weaver, now would be the time.
Now, now it's your turn. Go ahead, Chris, or Dick.
Go ahead. You want, you want.
You, you jumped on it. I'll move the Board of County Commissioners, close the public hearing and leave the record open for 10 days.
Is it necessary to open it for 10 days?
Legally, no.
I mean, I can't imagine that.
What, revise the motion?
Can we go forth and, and, and discharge eliminate?
To my knowledge, there's no requirement that you hold it for 10 days. We typically do that. But in my experience with these types of proceedings related to the Financial Assurance Plan, we've never had any public comments on this in the years past. So if you wanted to move to approve it at this point, um, that would save us a, a short visit in two weeks with you.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I will amend my motion to move that the Board of County Commissioners approve as discussed.
I think we should still close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and then approve. Thank you. Apologize if there's clunkiness on that. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
That was tough to get through.
Don't take it personally. We didn't want to.
Okay, let's request approval to update Carroll County Board of Licensed Commissioners Rules and Regulations and approval for three pieces of legislation. Gentlemen.
Good morning, Chairman Brawning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Wyndham and the Honorable Mr. Burke.
Seriously?
Wait, what?
Did you have to go there?
Wait, what?
Did you really have to go there?
Just two comments. Just two comments. First of all, happy birth... belated birthday, Commissioner Wance. And Commissioner Rothstein, let it be known that that photo may say he's 5'8". When he is the drum major of the Westminster Band, he's a full six feet. Because he has padding in his hat that makes him that tall. And now I understand why Commissioner Fraser is an excellent, well-known wrestling coach. He makes all the kids run all over South...
That's right.
East Carroll County. And I'm amazed that with the photos that were here this morning, that we didn't have one of Commissioner Boucher's Halloween costumes, which probably were rather risque, maybe, knowing him.
Yes.
Wait a second. You've got to say something now about, you know, don't leave them out.
Commissioner Weaver has been a longtime personal friend and his son and I have been in several joint ventures together. So I have nothing but praise to say for Commissioner Weaver.
Thank you, Dave.
Give him the five bucks later.
He's buying you lunch.
Okay, Mr. Brawning, it's on you.
Gentlemen, thank you all very much for your support. I have with me today our Chief Inspector Keith Benfer on my left and another member of the Board of Licensed Commissioners of Carroll County, Mr. George Barnhart. Quick background. Laws change, court cases change, communities change. So periodically, the rules and regulations of the Board of Licensed Commissioners for alcoholic beverages for Carroll County need to be changed. I think you all have been provided a copy of the changes.
Yep.
90% of the changes in our Carroll County regulations are basic house cleaning changes where the word pecuniary...
Pecuniary.
Pecuniary is shown. We have changed that to financial. None of us, including George Harmoning, the other commissioner, can pronounce it properly.
It's a good enough reason for me.
Pecuniarily was the one. That's the hard one.
And our esteemed attorney, Mr. Dixon, he kind of smiles when he does it too. So anyway, about 90% of it. Otherwise, the main changes to our rules and regulations, and before I go over them with you briefly, our procedure for this change was the commission had a meeting with interested parties, attorneys, beverage holders, license holders, and so on and so forth. And we came up with a general discussion of proposed changes with all of those in attendance. And after that, then we made the proposed changes before we had a public hearing. Our public hearing had as much opposition at that time as what you just witnessed with your previous subject. Okay? Rule 15 is adding a $50 a day penalty for renewal application taxes that are not paid on time. Background, we get people to come in on the last day to renew their license. If they're late, there's a $50 a day charge. They'll come in the last day and there may be a hold from the state for some unknown reason. And you all are more familiar with operating through the state than what I am. They can put papers underneath of a file and it could stay there forever, when there is really no need for that violation, that the taxes have been paid or whatever the situation has occurred that it's been satisfied. However, we are changing to a suspension hearing as the wording existing refers to a revocation hearing on renewal. We're changing that to suspension. You may be aware that a revocation means that that licensee can never hold a license again or that establishment. Whereas a suspension is, we can have a hearing and take necessary action rather than revoking the license.
I apologize. Just to make sure we're all clear, page seven, Rule 15, hotel. Okay.
Rule 20 is counting bar seats to a total amount of seats. This is one of the things that we need state legislation for, and I'll expand upon that later. We're changing Rule 20 to four to say that off-duty employees and patrons need to be out of the establishment at the closing time. Rule 28 is simply updating our music and noise rules to match whatever the county rules are. Rule 33 is making a new category for breweries. As you probably know, breweries are pretty much governed by state law. They have to have a county license, but we can't supersede anything that the state says. Here again, it's under Rule 40, it also refers to the $50 a day penalty for renewal applicants taxes that are not paid on time. Rule 57, we're requiring restaurants and liquor stores to be open five days a week. Basically, they are the questions other than, I mentioned, housekeeping rules. There have been some court cases that have been tried referring to residencies of a specific time, taxpayer, a resident and property owner in the jurisdiction. That's all been struck down by court rulings. And that's all been removed from our regulations. Basically, they're the changes to Carroll County rules and regulations.
The down ordinance, the 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, that does not mean that they cannot have music. It just means that the music that they do have cannot disturb the community outside of that facility.
Correct.
In other words, it's kind of like the Good Neighbors Act, you know?
Basically, that's right.
So because I don't want people to interpret this saying that music has to shut down at, you know, 10:00 PM. And that's not the case.
That's not the case.
They have to turn the volume down a little bit, but...
Our rules reflect whatever Carroll County's rule is for noise.
Yep. That makes sense. And then the 30 hours, five days, it was just 30 hours before and not saying five days. So now you're specifying that...
Five days.
Have to be five days.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That class DB that breweries get, that comes from the state, right?
Right. Right. That's why I mentioned that we're pretty much governed by state laws. They are, pretty much.
Class D license is by population. So every 5,000 people in a district can have one class D license. By us taking the breweries and making a separate license out of it, it takes that way from the other 5,000.
Gotcha, okay.
Now, we could have three or four breweries in Westminster.
Okay.
Or we could have... Some places, we could only have one. And we have one, no one else could go in there. Now allowing, since they have a state license, we allow breweries to go into a different location.
Makes sense. Because that's a... That's big business right now.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Frederick County is booming right now in Frederick City.
Yeah, okay. Well, we probably have two of the most outstanding outfits in the state, in my opinion, which is 1623 Brewery in Eldersburg and also Mr. Stanball and Union Bridge with his establishment up there. And there are others too that are really good. And you probably remember just recently, I think in the paper, the and so forth. So there are numerous ones and they keep sprouting up for home brew and so on and so forth.
Yeah, okay.
It's good for them, it's good for the public. Mr. Weaver will agree, it's good for agriculture, so.
Absolutely.
Lot of rye and corn goes into those products.
Right.
And barley.
Okay.
With that, I'd like to move the Board of Commissioners to approve the changes to the rules and regulations of the Board of Licensed Commissioners to approve the submission of the three pieces of legislation to then be presented to the Carroll County delegation.
I will second that. I also want to state that I very much appreciate the reform initiative of the Commissioners on this. We took the time during our tenure to go through and look at a lot of their fees and services and updated them. And to see you all do the same thing is very admirable. Thank you very much.
Okay, any further discussion?
Seeing here, none all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your support. I too want to thank and congratulate the Veterans Organization in Carroll County. As you begin your meetings, we have for a long standing time as the Board of Licensed Commissioners honored them also with a mome sana.
Appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much and have a nice day.
Thanks. You too. You as well. I think I'll be seeing more of this later.
Public hearing regarding a text amendment to the Employment Campus District to allow solar energy conversion facilities. Ms. Eisenberg.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am going to be here for a while this morning. I've got quite a few things on your agenda.
Relax, settle down.
I'm fine, thank you. Appreciate that.
We'll see if we're fine after we get through all this.
All right, so we are here before you this morning for a public hearing for a zoning text amendment for the allowance of ground-mounted solar energy conversion facilities on Employment Campus Zone land. Public hearing was published twice in the Carroll County Times on October 20th and October 27th for the public hearing this morning. And the request of the text amendment is to allow for ground-mounted solar energy conversion facilities within the Employment Campus District. I supplied a picture of what that looks like. I know there were some questions last time about what is ground-mounted solar. This was referred by this body on August 4th to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission discussed this at their August and September meetings and referred a favorable recommendation for adoption back to the Board of County Commissioners on September 20th. The recommended changes are for solar energy conversion facilities to allow ground-mounted, which is the yellow highlighted, solar energy conversion facilities may be approved as part of. And then the new language is or separate from the development plan pending conditional use approval. The ground-mounted solar field may be no more than 25 acres in size and not to exceed 50% of the total gross acreage or whatever is lesser. I know there was some discussion about maybe the confusion with that, but this is how the notice was sent out prior. So that language did not change. So if that is a point of additional clarification, that can happen after the public hearing. Roof-mounted solar energy facilities may be approved as part of the development plan subject to the requirements of 158-153 or mounted on a canopy in a parking area. That language was already there. That's not new language. That's part of the Employment Campus as it currently stands. So again, in the use table, this would go from a prohibited use in the Employment Campus to a conditional use approval. Again, then we had to also make amendments to 158-153 about solar energy generating systems. And the new language is Employment Campus Districts is the addition to that above paragraph. And then there shall be a size limit for systems in the Employment Campus District to be no more than that 25 acres or 50% of the gross site, whichever is lesser. And again, I know there was some discussion about that language, which we can amend if so after the public hearing when we come for discussion and decision. So that's all I have to brief you on for what is being heard today. I have Scott Graff with the Bureau of Public Works with us. He and Jason Green brought the suggestion to you all to make the decision to send it to Planning Commission. So if there's any other details you'd like to fill in, and Jason's here now.
Are there height restrictions on ground-mounted?
We don't have height restrictions on them. I don't know what the industry standard is for height. We don't have height restrictions specifically for those.
Okay, I'm just... Yes, ma'am?
15 feet.
15 feet.
15 feet? Okay.
Thank you, Jen. That was Jay Voight, Arizona Administrator.
Arizona Administrator Jay Voight said 15 feet.
Do this.
Just with them being up to 15 feet, can things be stored underneath the panels or would that be not...
I'm not a solar expert, so I'd ask Jason and Scott if they could come up and talk about what their solar background is. Or Jay, if Jay has any insight.
Yeah, just specifically with solar panels themselves. I mean, typically when they're the ground-mounted type, they're out in the middle of a field. So there's a maintenance requirement and there are certain clearances and stuff you need for the infrastructure underneath, such as the electricity and things like that. So, you know, you wouldn't want to store any obviously hazardous material underneath them and things like that. But this type, unless it's a parking canopy, you know, there are opportunities for those on parking lots and things like that to use them to shield some of our...
Yeah.
Some of those things, but that's not this application.
I think you could do... I think we talked about this with the solar... What's this, small community solar? Where you could have like grazing and things. Some certain grazing animals and things.
And stuff like that, we talked about.
But not goats.
One second. Okay, I apologize, ma'am. You have a comment on this?
We're going to have a public hearing.
Okay.
So this is a public hearing.
Okay, just give us a second. So where else are you, Linda, with this?
Time for public...
That's it. So it's time for... So again, we're having our public hearing now.
Right.
Because this is a legislative, not a quasi-judicial.
Right.
We can keep the record open for 10 days. And that was a point of discussion last time. And then we have discussion decision scheduled for November 17.
Okay. So any other questions directly to Linda? Okay, now the public hearing. Are there public comments?
Do you have comment cards?
Well, so that's what I was going to ask. If you wanted to commence the public hearing and ask anyone who wants to make a comment to fill out the card for this particular...
Or does anyone have any public comment?
Is there nobody here from the districts that are involved in this text amendment? I'm not familiar with...
Ma'am?
Hit the microphone.
This is being recorded. So if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone there and...
Oh, okay. If you can state your name for the record.
My name is Annette Fleischel. I live on 1401 Fannie Dorsey Road in Sykesville. And I know a little bit about the energy conservation and the energy generating systems because one has been proposed for across the street from where I live. So my wanting to make a mention about grazing underneath 15-foot, that's like highly unlikely. I have goats in my barn. We have animals that cross the road. And it's very unlikely that they would be grazing underneath the solar because they would be afraid of the noise of what's happening. I know that I have deer that come across by land and they wouldn't even be able to go into the community because you have to have a fence around it. So there's a lot of questions about how you do grazing underneath these facilities. Now, my question that I had is I'm not familiar with what the term educational, does that mean that this is on campus educa...
Employment.
Employment.
Okay, employment. Campus, they call it a campus. Is it near schools?
Yeah, this is a zoning text amendment for properties that are zoned Employment Campus in our code. So they... We have them spread throughout the county.
Okay, are these like light industry kind of things?
There's a host of uses. Can be light industry, can have private educational facilities on them, can have certain types of recreation, can even have a certain percent of residential uses.
Okay. I live near Clees Mill, so I went down Clees Mill to try to see where the facility was going to be proposed for. And I didn't see any signs. Maybe I didn't go far enough down. But I noticed that there was light industry, you know, what I would call, you know, some development stuff. But directly across the street and sometimes adjacent to were residences, were in land. And I saw a part of the residential area that actually had small crops growing on it, like there was a field with some corne grown and stuff. So my question was, what do you... How is this different? This text amendment different than the one that works with the agricultural zones? Now, I have a copy of the text amendment and I've read it. And some of you, I've talked to you before about it, but... So that's my question. How is it different?
Well, this is a public hearing.
Yeah. So really what we're doing is we're taking information in at this time.
Okay.
So it's not to have the dialogue back and forth, but to take information and concerns. And you're...
Okay.
You're doing well. Now, and you're, you're doing well. You're doing, you're, you're asking the right questions and that's, that's good to allow us to have further conversation with our staff amongst ourselves. After the public hearing, we keep it open to deliberate and then come back with our decisions moving forward.
Well, I guess my public comments would be something like, I wonder what the people who live adjoining or adjacent to the, the solar energy systems that are going to be put up. I know in our neighborhood that the, the neighborhood that's looking at one that is on agricultural zoned. And it, it was changed. The, the implementation for the solar passed this five member council back a year ago, May in 21. So I'm just wondering how those people would feel. I know our community is adamantly opposed. But it's, it is not an industrial or, or employment. It is residences and it is farmland.
Right.
So maybe the nuance is different in terms of the public that's living next to the solar facility. 99.9% of the 160 names that I have on a position, on a petition against it are opposed to the solar facility. So I'm speaking from the viewpoint of the residential areas and the people that go up and down the road there, they are against it. So I think you need to take some, some comment and some, some from the people that are going to be living next to it.
Absolutely. And I appreciate that. I appreciate your comments and what you've prepared and gathered for information. Again, it allows us to understand the situation best, you know, because we want to serve the community best. And then what we'll end up having, just for you to understand, we'll close the public hearing. We'll have 10 days and then we'll come back, right now scheduled for November 17th, to either further discuss and/or make a decision.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
I have one question. Is there an address at Clees Mill that I could look at? I know there's an address on Route 140. I wondered if it was near the dump.
So this is not about a specific area?
Oh, okay.
This is actually about allowing solar in these type of zoned areas? So it really would be unfair to just say this one point. Now, understanding what address you're looking at, how that is specifically zoned, that's something that Ms. Eisenberg can help you with afterwards.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, it just brings up a question on this, if I may. In Employment Campus, you wouldn't allow grazing under these, would you?
Are there?
It would not be.
If there's any prohibition, I.
Yes, you would Commissioner.
You would?
I don't know this is.
Yes, agriculture is a use that's permitted in all zoning districts. So if somebody wanted to do some grazing or have some sheep or cattle or something in these facilities, theoretically they could do that, yes.
Okay, so I just want to capture, again, I apologize. Try not to be so clunky in doing this, but Mr. Voight shared that grazing would be allowed if there are obviously animals because agricultural animals can be on any of these premises, so zoned areas.
And keep in mind sheep are the primary, what are they primarily talking about? Because the others can destroy those areas.
But again, that's not regarding this issue right now. So, okay, and we'll capture, ma'am, we'll capture your public comments and whatever you want to provide. And then further discussion with Linda, more than happy. Are there any other public comments in the room?
I don't have any. I was, that's why I was hoping people would fill the cards out if they had a public comment to make. And for the other public hearing, if you have a comment, please fill out the comment card and you can hand it to myself or Ms. Wyndham and we can call the names.
Okay, so yeah, just get with her afterwards. And then Chris, is there anybody on the phone?
I have no public comments. However, if Linda could close the presentation when we're going through these public hearings so that we can show the timer for public comment. Thank you.
Okay, all good. With that said, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. The Board of County Commissioners close the public hearing, but keep the record open for a period of 10 days.
Second.
I got a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Linda, you now like to talk about the adoption of comprehensive rezoning agricultural and conservation zoning districts text amendments?
No.
For an I-1 and C-3.
Oh, I apologize. Public hearing regarding a text amendment to I-1, C-3 districts.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So again, this is a public hearing and so just clarification. So public hearing is a time for testimony from the public. So anyone that wishes to speak and give a comment, please fill out the comment card so we can have that information. And we will set a three minute timer, not that, you know, if you want to go over that is your decision just so we can keep this in an orderly manner. And again, it's not a time for question and answer and discussion once the public hearing commences. It's just a time for testimony. This isn't our first time here with the Board of County Commissioners on this request. Again, as with the last public hearing, notice was given in the Carroll County Times as we're required to do on October 20th and October 27th. This is for a text amendment request for the Industrial 1 or Industrial Light District and the Commercial High or C-3 District. There are multiple requests which I will go over in my presentation. This information has been posted on our website and available for public distribution and public viewing for several months now. As you recall, we came before you on August 4th, having a discussion about this very lengthy text amendment proposal. And you referred it to the Planning and Zoning Commission with very specific instructions to them. This was discussed at the Planning Commission meetings in August and September. And they referred back to you with a favorable recommendation on September 20th. And I'll go over those recommendations. So there is a lot that was requested in this particular text amendment. Specifically, the first portion is pertaining to the Business Industrial Park in the I-1 District. Because of how we revised the Industrial Restricted and Industrial General Districts with the comprehensive code revisions, we created a new I-1 District and a new I-2. In the new I-1 District, there was the elimination of the Business/Industrial Park and those became now referred to as Industrial Parks. However, we already had one Business/Industrial Park operating in the county and the decision was made with that code amendment to grandfather in that particular use on that particular property because they were the only one like it. So because of that, when we did the comprehensive zoning text amendment for those districts originally, because there was only one, no definition was included. So the proposal is to include now a specific definition just for posterity sake to put in the Business Industrial Park defined as a project development approved under the Business Park provisions in effect prior to April 1st, 2019. The next recommended change is for self-storage facilities, that they would not be part of the commercial use calculation in those districts. Currently, there's a balance between industrial uses and commercial uses in those districts that have a calculation ratio. But certain uses within that are not part of that ratio. And the request is to have self-storage facilities not part of that calculation ratio. Currently, medical and dental centers are exempt. But now the request is for the inclusion of self-storage facilities, as you can see in the yellow highlight that's underlined. Will not otherwise permitted in the I-1 District shall be committed in a Business Industrial Park and shall not be included in the calcul, that's supposed to be like a number two, and not included in the calculation of commercial uses which are otherwise not permitted in the I-1 District. So again, they would be without limitation. Secondly, self-storage facilities shall be regulated by the requirements of Section 158-079 which shall prevail over any conflict or inconsistency with any other provisions required pursuant to the chapter. The requirement of Section 158-158 should not apply to self-storage facilities developed within a Business Industrial Park. Next is to create parking requirements for self-storage in the park. Currently, it's a formula of the various types of uses within those parks. So to be more specific for the self-storage is to have an average of 3.5 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of the building area shall be provided for lots within the business park with the exception of self-storage facilities which shall require two parking spaces for employees and the greater of one parking space for each 20,000 square feet of building area or five spaces. The minimum number of spaces as required herein and any modifications to parking space design standards as previously approved by the Planning Commission during the site development plan approval of the Business Industrial Park shall supersede any parking requirements and design standards of this chap, of Chapter 155. So again, creating these standards. Next, the request for this district was to modify sign requirements to have in addition to the signage allowed by Section 158, each building lot or lots within the business park may have signs in accordance with 158-114. So now the final with the Business Industrial Park is allow yards on both sides of the interior lot line may be zero and Planning Commission may reduce other yard requirements. Adding new language that where the zero yard is proposed, setbacks, buffers and/or landscape screening requirements shall not be applicable. So meaning not for external boundaries to a particular property, but the internal lot lines for these types of parks are not subject to those landscaping requirements. To be more explicit about that is the request. Okay, now moving from the Industrial Business Park, which is again, not one particular property, that one particular use. In the current I-1 zone, we have what's called an Industrial Park. And the suggested recommended changes, currently we allow 10,000 square foot of retail space to increase the size allowance from 10,000 to 25,000 square feet. Allow medical and dental without limitations. Allow parks to be subdivided. In our current code, we do not allow subdivision of parks. So the language would be an Industrial Park shall be permitted to subdivide at the option of the developer and subject to all applicable requirements in Chapter 155 related to subdivision. And again, as we said, with the self-storage and the parking standards in the Business Industrial Park, again, the creation of parking standards for the Industrial Park. So that way, there's not this crazy calculation of looking what the different types of uses are figuring out based on that, making it a comprehensive parking requirement. And then finally, this is for the flip side. So industrial zones, we have industrial parks. In the C-3 District, we have a Business Park. So again, this is, Business Park shall be permitted to subdivide at the option of the developer and shall be subject to all requirements in Chapter 155 related to subdivision. So again, keeping this similar to the Industrial Park allowance, allowing that same thing within the Business Park. And again, creating parking requirements for the Business Park and allowing that at that 3.5 as opposed to the 2.3 giving that this is more of a commercial type district, so more parking may be required because of the service and commercial nature of the Business Park. And then just quick tables comparing the three different types. So we have the Business Industrial Park, no longer. The Business Park, moving forward, and the Industrial Park, moving forward. These are what's currently allowed in each and the uses permitted. The red is the new use or change to the district. So for here, as you can see in the table, that's that 25,000 square feet increase. The restrictions lifted for as part of the percentage calculation for the self-storage facilities in the Business/Industrial Park and the medical and dental facilities in the Industrial Park. The creation of parking requirements in each of the types of parks. In the Business Industrial Park, clarification regarding the additional signs for each use. Allowing subdivision of the commercial, I mean of the Industrial Park and the Business Park. And then for just miscellaneous, self-storage facilities in the park should not be regulated by the section of the requirements in 158-158. And then the other two requirements, which would be the exact same for both the Business Park and the Industrial Park for where a zero yard is proposed at an interior lot line, setback, buffers and landscaping screening requirements shall not be applicable. So that is all the changes that are being proposed. Again, as with the last public hearing, this is our public hearing and time to take public comment. Because it's legislative again, we would keep the record open for 10 days and we'll be back before you on November 17th for discussion and decision.
Okay, thanks for the presentation. Do we have any public comments on the phone, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have any public comments in the room? Okay, let's limit this to 2 minutes 30 seconds.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is, this sounds complicated, doesn't it?
Although we know who you are, would you mind?
Clark Schaefer, sorry. This sounds complicated, but it really isn't that complicated. What this is, is it's an adjustment to Carroll County's carve-outs for these kind of parks. And I, I'm familiar with the history of this. What happened is there was industrial zones, I and I, I-1 and I-2, and they had a bunch of lists in them. They were primarily manufacturing and then I-2 got heavy industrial. And then the county figured out many, many years ago that they needed to carve out these park-like provisions from these industrial districts. And it's been very successful. Liberty Exchange would not be there if there wasn't this carve-out. Now, the carve-out the county chose was to, was to say, if you do one of these parks which requires a huge capital investment, long-range planning and a coordinated development, we will loosen up our industrial, our tight industrial zone and allow some, some commercial service uses in there. And as I say, it's been very successful. The uses are compatible. The marketing has been, people have invested, people have spent money, people have created jobs, people have paid taxes. And so what this is, is St. John, who I represent, they have a lot of experience here and in other areas. And they are asking for a couple tweaks. Now, a lot of these are housekeeping and Linda dutifully and properly went over every detail. But really, what we're talking about here are, we're looking to add medical dental centers, or not add, but allow medical dental centers without counting against the, sort of the ratio. Now, what's the rationale for that? Well, the rationale is this. They are compatible uses, they are needed services, and they provide good jobs. Why not encourage them? Why not allow them? And they fit. With regard to the, the self-storage, which I know, I think has been a lot of misunderstanding was, this is not a text amendment that allows self-storage where it's not already allowed. It's already allowed, okay? What this does is, is adjust the parking regs for it, and I'll, I'll talk about that in a minute. But what it does is says, if you do self-storage, it doesn't count against your ratio of retail service stuff. And the rationale for that is, they, these uses, which in, in what we contemplate are the office building climate controlled type thing, these uses are more like warehouses than they are like convenience stores. They use very few services and they pay commercial industrial tax rates. A home run in a lot of respects. So why not encourage them? They already are allowed. The 10,000 to 25,000 foot square footage, that allows a specialty grocery store to perhaps. Whereas at 10,000, you're not going to get anything like that. So, and they're compatible. The parking, I think, and everybody agrees, I think, I haven't heard negative comments from staff or anybody else. It works. And right now, there are no, well, right now, the parking regs for self-storage or for these, these parks is you look at each use, you look at the chart and then you go, well, that use has X spaces. This use has, doesn't work for a park, okay? You need a two-point, you know, you need a uniform standard for a park because all those uses are in one area. And it's practically impossible because when you get your parking, when you get your site plan approved, you don't know what your uses are going to be. You don't know if you're going to have a medical dental or a Rite Aid or an electrical contractor. So you need this 2.5 per that. We, and by the way, one of the self-protective sort of elements to this thing is, I don't think St. John or any, any developer that does these would be proposing. uh, a standard that would have a subs- that would create a substandard park. They've got a lease.
Finish your thoughts.
They've got to go. Uh, this comes to you with a unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. And I do not, and I also submit to you that if your economic development director thought that this was going to be bad for the industrial park business in, or business park business in Carroll County, he would have said so, and he, he, he hasn't said so, in fact, we've met with him, he's supportive of it. So we would appreciate your support, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments? Okay.
I'll make the motion, we close the public hearing and keep the record open for ten days.
Second.
Okay, again, is there a reason to keep it open?
Yes.
Yes, legally you have.
Legally for this, you have to, it's legislative.
Got it. Okay, any further discussion? Seen here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Linda, you're two for two. Adoption, comprehensive rezoning, agricultural conservation zoning districts, text amendments.
Okay.
We talked about this before?
Just kidding, go ahead.
It's all new. No, so, uh, we had a really wonderful, uh, work session with, uh, you all on Tuesday, um, we really appreciate all the comments and insight. We prepared legislation for your final review and we're here for your discussion and decision, hopefully, on the recommended changes to the agricultural zoning district as well as the conservation zoning district. As you know, this has been years and years and years in the making for the entire ki- uh, comprehensive code revisions, and we've been working non-stop for the last twelve to thirteen months with the agriconser- agricultural conservation work group. Our internal concept team, planning commission and various works, many, many work sessions with you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mary, um, to, if there's any other additional questions that you need to have discussed.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mary.
I'm really just here to answer questions, we made the changes, the specific change to ag remaining portions that was discussed on Tuesday, you should have that in front of you.
Um, we don't.
County attorney's office.
Could we see that language, please?
And also, the decisions that we made on Tuesday during the work session, are they bonding, binding, or can they be modified?
They could be modified.
This is, this is your opportunity.
This is our chance to do that.
Okay.
Um.
I thought anyone would, but.
Wait for it. You know me by now, come on, man.
It's close. I need Commissioner Wans to.
How long have you worked with me now?
I need Commissioner Wans to convince me.
You want to go down to the?
Just go to that specific, just, just go to the end where we, we had the tiered concept approach that we discussed for a lengthy period of time.
Right there.
Yeah, and I, I will share before you're going to convince me is, I really appreciate the conversation Tuesday, that was probably one of the best collegial discussions that we had, back and forth. Um, uh, that means a lot in our community and, uh, I really respected it a whole lot. I walked out of there, although maybe not agreeing with everything, but really believed that was very well done, so, but now, convince me.
Well, now, I, I don't, you know, I don't know if it's up to me to convince you, but, uh, you know, again, I, I will, I will uh, echo your, your thoughts on that, we had some really good discussions, and I will also echo the fact that there were some great discussions at the planning and zoning commission as well. Uh, I can't keep, I don't want to keep beating that message, but, man, it's, it's, it's really good to have somebody, you know, from this group sitting there, uh, to, to be able to hear what those discussions are. We hear what they say, but yet it's understood more when someone can say, yeah, but what they really meant to say was, so it just, I think that's a, a great way to do it. Uh, you all heard what I had to say, uh, at the work session, uh, I'm still challenged by the fact that, um, a lot of our agricultural community folks, uh, were in favor of, of the one and done method, if you will. Uh, because a lot of our agricultural land is, is, is not being used for the intent that it was designed or the intent as to why it was there in the first place. Uh, and that's why, uh, I had, for those that didn't watch the, the, um, the work session, uh, that's why I do agree with the tiered approach, I do. I think that's a good way in which to reach that happy medium, if you will, and allow for those that, that do want to do us, uh, something additional. But yet, respect, uh, what our heritage or whatever is when it comes to ag land. So I had made, uh, the recommendation that yes, the tiered approach is good, uh, but I didn't like the zero to twenty acres. Uh, I wanted to do zero to forty, is that what I said, for one, and then over forty, two. Uh, and I thought that gave that kind of, um.
Balance.
That the balance, if you will, between our ag community and those that feel so strongly about it, and the ability for folks that want to do something with their ag land, if they're, if they so desire to do, to do that, uh, the ability to do something with it and not, uh, while still respecting property rights. Because from the first day I sat here, I made mention about property rights, which are very important to me, so I think that would have reached a happy medium. I, I think this is a little high, uh, and I don't like, um, that, that additional usage, so.
Yeah.
Dick, you and I, uh, kind of agreed at the work session on that, uh, I'm respectful of our ag community because I've probably got the biggest ag district in the county, so.
I liked your idea, uh, coming up on this, because what we don't want is to have, um, um, well, basically a commercial zone in those ag remainders, but this does give us a little, you, you had a good compromise, I'll, I'll give you that, and I want to go back to your workshops when you started this and, uh, Price, I think you were probably head on all that. You did a great job through the workshops, getting this to this point, and I'm in favor of everything except for this one little glitch. I would like to see change to Commissioner Wans's thought on it, and this could go through very easily, I think so.
The, um, and I appreciate the concern I have, you know, that I, well, cause what I'm thinking through is, one is absolutely property owner rights. I, I want to keep them, and if they have the ability, you know, to do what's, what they want to do on their property, that, that's first and foremost in my mind, but I'm also thinking and balancing it with the economics in the county. It gives another opportunity to grow the county without overgrowing the county. Um, and that's why I was thinking about these numbers was, one additional would be an additional economic, you know, uh, opportunity. Um, but
I don't.
I don't, thinking through that, I'm, I'm having tough time chewing on that, you know, to be honest, uh, you know, it's, uh, we, we have designated growth areas for a reason, um, we have growth happening, the impact that this would have on revenue coming into the county, uh, would probably be minimal if we went up to three and, and as opposed to keeping it at two. Um, so, I'm kind of having that, you know, over the last few days, thinking through this, so, okay.
With that, go ahead, Don. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I knew this, I got to get this debate in here, this is good.
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
First, these are ag remainders. No one is, is forced to do anything additionally on those ag remainders, people own it, but they want to farm and so forth, they're welcome to do that, no one's going to stop them from doing that. Secondly, even with the tiered approach that's up there on the screen right now, we've already restricted what can be done on the ag remainders i- if we make this change that, that's up there right now, I am not in favor of restricting it any more than that. I, I think this is a good, good compromise. I, I, eighty-some percent will be in the one or two additional uses, I can't remember the exact number I have in front of me, but eighty-some percent will be in those one or two uses, that's it. And I'm not, and why I, I am looking at the county, I think it's, it would help the county, but that's not the main reason I like this better, is because of people that have owned these properties. And I believe this went into effect in the seventies or something with that effect, that where they had more rights for their own property. That's why I think this is restricting somewhat, and it is, but it still gives them some use of that property if they want to take this particular use. But it does, it does step it back. Say it again.
Still have two or three additional rights on this.
If you count the originals.
Yeah.
Count the original, it would be three under what I'm proposing, right?
Would be.
The original is the residential lot.
Right. That's one plus two others.
Plus two others.
And then this way, up to forty, two, over forty, three. So you still, you would still have gotten three shots at the apple, if you will. While.
Correct.
And keep in mind, this is not commercial ground, this is agricultural.
Yeah, one residential, two non.
Yeah.
And I think two non is enough.
I would say to, to Commissioner Weaver's remark, this is not commercial, this is agricultural, it is, no one's forcing them to do anything on this land. They can, if they want to, keep it agriculture, that's, that's the, one of the things I keep going back to. No one said, okay, you have to develop this, you have to put three uses on this, because you, no, you don't have to do that, if you want to keep farming, then farm it. There's nothing wrong with that, or, or lease it out, or however you want to do it. But this gives them an opportunity to use that land for other ways, and they've had that right since the seventies. I don't think we should take it more of that away than we are in this table right here.
If they want to develop, then they can, it requests a zoning change and go to commercial or whatever. That's still an option.
I mean, it is and it's not, because again, you know, as we know, we've seen two rezoning requests come through, the bar is high for just a request, we don't request in grand zonings. I mean, that's just, but comprehensively, yes, and could master plans change and change the nature of the ags. That could happen for some particular parcels in the future, I, I don't know, depends on what a new plan would say. My point is, just to say, I want to rezone to commercial, that's not how this system works, so, that, that likelihood would be small.
Yeah.
I'd like to move that we, uh, follow Com- Commissioner Wans's recommendation on the tiers.
Which is one, one up to forty acres? Go ahead.
Up to forty-one and over forty-two uses.
Up to forty acres, you'd get one additional.
More than forty acres.
More than forty, you'd get two.
Which is a lot.
No pun intended.
Okay, so I have, so I have a motion on the floor, that's modifying this, one, two and three to one and two.
Well, obviously, I'm going to second it.
Okay, so now I have a motion, I have a second. So, uh, any further discussion on this?
No, other than the fact to say, look, I, I, I'm not going to lose any sleep over this, I'm not. Uh, but I'm very respectful of, of what you're saying, and I do appreciate that. Uh, and yeah, they, this gives them additional, but I think it also makes a bold statement on how much we respect our, our heritage when it comes to ag, remainders or whatever, I mean, it's, I, I just think it just, it goes to that. And I truly believe that there's not going to be a lot of this anyway.
Yeah.
I just don't think that there's going to be, uh, so to your argument about the economics part of it, I, I, it, what, it's going to be a, man, pennies on the dollar, if you will.
Go back to the original intent.
Yeah, you're not, you're not going to see a, a broad, uh, oh, rush in now, but it goes back to the intent of what this was made for when we started this whole adventure in, in this county. And, um, you know, the horror stories that we hear about other counties where there, I mean, one of the counties you brought up, five, they can do five things or what.
That's just total.
But that's total, right, right.
And that's different, this is completely, this is only on the main.
I know, okay, yeah, okay. I don't want to get lost in the numbers, I got C's in math and you taught it, so whatever. So, you know, I just think it, for me, I'm going to stop debating, but I just.
Second it.
I, I just, and I want to say, this, I believe, Linda, you, this was, you pulled this out, this tiered concept, if you will, and I think it's great, and I'll, I, I want, I thank you for it. I think it just went a bit too far, in my opinion, but again, I'm not going to lose sleep over it, so.
I will.
Dick? Well, I, I might, but.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for this to be amended again, from one, two and three to one and two, as we've been discussing. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Oppose.
Okay, three, two. I may lose sleep over this. Okay, what else we want to talk about on this?
Um, so now we need to, um, adopt now the changes to one fifty-eight, um, and then one fifty-five with this amendment and then the, uh, adoption resolution. So we need motions for.
You need three different motions?
Correct.
So I'll move that we adopt the revisions to one fifty-five.
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
Yep.
Second. Any discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Want me to keep going?
Sure.
You're on a roll.
Uh, I make the most in, the motion, I make the motion that, uh, we adopt the code revisions to chapter one fifty-eight as presented with the modification, no, no.
No, that was in one fifty-five, that was one, yep.
Okay, okay, then I'll just stop, at, with the modifications as presented.
Promise?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have anything.
I apologize, Don, you're good, right?
I said aye.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else on this?
Yes, and the implementation resolution needs to be adopted as well, um, and that's simply stating that this will take effect on.
December first and anybody in the development, any property in the development review process is under the old provisions, we talked about it at the work session.
Correct.
It's the same resolution we used for commercial, industrial and residential.
So if you're in the queue, you're in the queue.
If you're anywhere in the queue at all, as of December first.
As of December, before December first, you're.
Yep.
But after December the first.
Under the new code.
Uh, I move that we go under the new code.
Adopt the implementation resolution as of December first.
I'll make that motion as stated.
I'll second that, okay, we got a couple of seconds.
All right.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, uh.
You're welcome.
Lot of very good discussion, I'll, I'll share in a couple of, uh, you know, um, whatever we call them, topics, agenda items, this is going to play. I'll tell you that right now, um. So, yeah, and we'll get to that. Okay, this one should be relatively easy, let's go with the rezoning case two-twenty-seven, MJY Investments LLC.
Um, and this is just for your discussion and decision for this rezoning case, um, with me is Hannah Weber for any additional questions. Um, the public hearing closed, um, two weeks ago, and, um, you did receive some additional comments, but the record was closed. Um, so now is the time to make a decision to rezone the property from agriculture as it's currently zoned to commercial three, medium, medium, I'm sorry, C-two, medium, personal medium.
Were there any comments that were made additional or no, there was not, no other?
There was one, wasn't there?
Yes, but the record cl- or two, but the record had closed the day of the hearing, so, um.
Was there any additional conversation about this, I mean, I hadn't heard any, and, you know, even though when things close, we still get phone calls and emails and texts and all that kind of stuff that, you know, are relevant, um, so I'm not sure why we would not move forward with this. Um, I'll move the board of county commissioners approve the rezoning of rezoning, or the rezoning. I'll move the Board of County Commissioners approve the rezoning, of rezoning, or the rezoning.
Case number.
Case number two twenty-seven, M J Y Investments LLC, from agriculture to C two, based on the mistake argument presented.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know, we should have done it ten days ago, I know.
No, I, I'm, I'm fine with it, and I want, you know, I appreciate the, the, the comments and all that we have, but this, this one, I believe, is, is is a common sense decision, because of where it lies, and, you know, so.
Now, the next one, the text amendment referral to the planning and commercial centers section one fifty-five dot zero nine four. As I mentioned, I believe this is relevant to what we discussed, two agenda items, or agenda item before. Dealing with concerns of overgrowth, dealing with property owners' rights, dealing with what makes the most common sense to keep Carroll County the way we want Carroll County. And I appreciate, you know, us bringing this forward, as we said we were going to, with Mr. McCormick, you know, attention to this. And now whether we want to bring this back to the planning and zoning, because that's what this is about.
Referring to them.
Referring back to them.
Just referring to them, not that, um, I just want to be clear that, 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 this is, this proposal is not in their purview right now.
Right.
So right now, this would be something for you to refer to them.
Yeah.
To, to, to review and make any recommended changes.
Right, right.
I just want people to think it was in process, because we said refer back, okay, yeah.
Refer and say back, refer to them. Okay, and, okay. Before we start on this, Chris, are there any comments, or anybody on the phone?
I've got no one on the line.
Okay, is there anyone here that wants to comment on this? Okay.
Hi, my name is Bill McCormick, I live in Eldersburg. So when you guys approved the current code for planned commercial centers, you guys used language that would allow discretion to be used when these types of projects were submitted to the county. And I believe that you were deliberate and specific when you used that language to allow for discretion. The discretion does no good if there are five unelected people, the Board of Zoning Appeals, who do not accurately represent the entirety of the community, that can overrule the commissioners, the P Z C, and the citizens of Carroll County. So all I'm asking you to is approve this referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm looking for something that's more appealing to my surroundings. I'm not against growth, Commissioner. I, I actually don't mind mixed use either. I, I think the issue is with the overcrowding and the kind of piling on of a lot of new developments. And I, I just don't believe these planned commercial centers fit with the surrounding areas. Some of you have said recently that the code should continue to be reviewed for improvements. That statement was made during a proposed change from a developer, actually, I think you guys just reviewed that today. I can only hope you feel the same about changes proposed by citizens. The fact that my petition has made it this far, kind of makes me believe that you, you do feel the same way, and I really do appreciate you bringing this to, to the point that it's at now. There is a clear consensus of the citizens that do not believe planned commercial centers fit with the surrounding communities as written in the code. This has been demonstrated by letters to you all and petitions with hundreds of names on them that were completely ignored by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The first planned commercial center was a mistake, and they're in the process of making another bigger, just as unsightly mistake. Please do not allow a third. Let the Planning and Zoning Commission review this section of the code to ensure it is in line with the county's master plan of smart, measured growth. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you, and not to unpack any of that comments, because that would be unfair, except to say that we do listen to the community, or we do, at best, I can only speak for my colleagues and I in moving forward, and that's where we've gotten to. Whether we agree or not, but it's very important that we have the ability to listen to the community and act on the best interest of our community, so. Do we have any other public comments?
Yes, Ms. Kelly Schaefer Miller.
Yeah, so just thank you, Mr. McCormick. Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You could take three and a half minutes, since your dad only took two and a half.
I appreciate that, thank you. Kelly Schaefer Miller here today, on behalf of Stablas Properties. I appreciate Mr. McCormick's ability to request this type of amendment to the code. Mr. McCormick has been a vocal opponent in the Stablas approved site plan, which is currently in the midst of a circuit court appeal. I, my brief comment here is that, as you are all well aware, because you were all very involved in the review of the comprehensive text amendment, the planned commercial centers were carried over from the old code into that comprehensive text amendment, and were carefully reviewed by this, this Board of Commissioners and Planning Commission during that process. They are restricted to commercially zoned properties, and they have an allowance for residential uses only on a second story. So there are very limited instances, and I think that was probably done at the intent of this commission, where any residential component would be involved in these planned commercial centers. There's no exemption for planned commercial centers to get out of other site plan requirements. So school adequacy, all other adequate public facilities have to be approved as part of that process as well. I, I think that this is, at a countywide level, this is an inappropriate request of a text amendment. This would not just impact one property, this would impact any commercial property in the county. And so I do not believe that this is an appropriate request at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay. Ms. Heizmerg, Ms. Lane, the floor is yours.
Um, that's all we have for you. So, again, I mean, I, let me just go over briefly, though, for the viewing audience. So on October sixth, a concerned citizen from the Freedom area did come before the commissioners during their public comment period, requesting that this particular section, which is one five five oh nine four, referred to as planned commercial centers. This is not in the zoning code, but in the subdivision portion, before to the Planning Commission for their review. Specifically, a letter was sent by Bill McCormick requesting the commission review the allowance of the second story residences and their associated densities. So specifically, if you were to refer this to the Planning Commission, our request would be that you limit it to what the specific concern, concern is with the planned commercial center provision.
Say that again, please.
Um, our, our request would be that you would limit, instead of opening it up to the entirety of the, the C one, C two, and C three districts, which we've already completed, and the entirety of planned commercial centers, because if we open it up to planned commercial centers, that is, the commercial districts are the only places you have planned commercial centers. Planned commercial centers serve a purpose of having, I guess, strip malls or services within our commercial districts. This would be the only district to have them. A planned commercial center simply means you can have multiple uses on a particular commercial site. The portion, I believe, and from my discussion with Mr. McCormick, that his concern was the residential second story component specifically, not with planned commercial centers in general. If we eliminate planned commercial centers in general, you would be eliminating completely the use of having, you know, a, a multi-use commercial center, similar to what's here at the corner of one forty and Center Street. You would not be allowed to have those.
So, go ahead, I apologize.
So, so you're suggesting if we do.
Refer this.
Refer this, that only the, that part of the.
Correct.
Not, not the whole thing.
Not the whole, I'm sorry.
If I may, and that's similar to these text amendments that, for which you had public hearings earlier today on the I one and, and C three. When, when it was presented, at that time, when those requests were made, the board specifically referred just the topics that were being requested. So the Planning Commission, if I'm not mistaken, narrowly narrowed their focus on just those requests. So how do these requests fit in, you know, to the overall, and what impact would they have? Rather than opening the entire I one.
So you don't want to open up the aperture on the specific text amendment, you want it to be focused on this portion of, but it's, but it's really only one portion of the planning and commercial centers.
Correct.
It's not planning and commercial centers.
Correct.
It's the accessory use, because that's what.
Okay, so it's the accessory, yeah, okay.
So since this is, since this particular case is in circuit court now.
This would do nothing for anything that's in motion.
Or would do nothing to affect whatever that decision will.
Correct. This is only prospective, future stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm struggling with this anyway, because I've seen the amount of work that has been going, that has been done. And, you know, where, where, I'm not sure where this stops. While I appreciate the citizens coming out and, and, you know, bringing these, these types of challenges. You know, we could do this with almost every part of the code, if someone so desires to do that. And, I mean, I'm, 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 again, I'm struggling with this, because I've seen the amount of work that Planning and everyone else, our department, our staff, the Planning Commission has done up to this point. Now we're going, now, now, now we're, we're going to go back and say, well, no, wait a minute. And again, no disrespect to anyone that wants to reach out, I get that. I've done a lot of that over the last eight years to revisit, but this is pretty complex when you do this.
Was this discussed in the original proposal that went forward, planning and zoning?
So this has been on the books for thirty or forty years.
Long time.
Right, and then it was utilized with the Princess Shopping Center, near the twenty-six, twenty-six thirty-two corridor. And this is only the second time that this particular provision has been used. And so we did discuss it as part of the revisions to C one, C two, and C three, and the decision was made by this body to continue with the current provisions as they stand with those.
So.
And it's just a development option. It's not a zoning decision. It's just a development option.
The, the, a couple of things. One, like I said, two agenda items, when we started talking about the, how we're dealing with agricultural remainders, we are looking at the community. I'm doing what's right for Carroll County, and it's a community issue. I feel like this is a community issue. You know, it definitely, with the one planned commercial center being on twenty-six thirty-two down in Eldersburg, this being a second potential site, I mean, there's only so many places that these things are going to go. The community has reached out, and, you know, you're, you're right, it can continue on. People can question everything, but it's not just one individual. And I'd rather get it right. I mean, it may take a step back. But I'd rather take that step back, bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, let them work through it, have the work sessions, have these discussions, to get it right. And I refer right back to.
So you're saying it's wrong?
I'm saying that there's potential for it to be wrong, yeah.
This is, we just went over this. And you're saying you've heard from other people?
Absolutely. Yeah, no, no, I apologize. I didn't mean to be, um, no, absolutely, oh my gosh. This, the, um, storage facility down twenty-six, and Prothrow Road are like the three topics that I'm here and is able to probably. But this has been a very, um, important item on twenty-six. It's right across the street, Liberty Exchange, there's a lot of growth happening. And a lot of the community is saying, let's fill what's already there, then continue to build out twenty-six, because.
This is about the specific use of residential. This doesn't have anything to do with.
No, that's right, right.
Which is where I'm struggling with it, I mean, isn't it?
It's amending.
I remember the planning, I remember Planning Commission talking about this, about how that's sort of the, sort of what's happening now. Right? Isn't that, don't, don't you guys remember that?
I'm, I'm sorry.
I mean, they were talking about these particular places, and how, you know, the rep, or whatever it is.
Residents over top of the commercial.
Is sort of the, the, the norm, if you will, and I'm not, I mean, I don't.
I think the point was, we have to allow for some type of multifamily somewhere, and this was an opportunity to allow multifamily housing, which is necessary, to have affordable housing in Carroll County for our citizens that need that type of housing stock.
That's what it was, thank you.
And we have a very limited opportunity for that, and this was just one more avenue, since we don't have a lot of avenues to do that for such.
Right.
This is very.
It doesn't even need to be affordable housing, it's just, it would, it'll be whatever the market approves, but.
That's where it was, the market, right, okay, thank you.
This is a very popular concept in many other counties, correct?
Yes.
Yes, a lot of jurisdictions do use this model.
Yeah, and I, it is, and again, keeping the, again, the, the culture of Carroll County, that's what we did two activities ago. I think we should take a step back and allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to review this option. And if changes need to be made, they make them, and recommend them back to us.
Remember, on the other side of that coin is, they could very well get to the point where they say, no, we're good with it.
That's correct, absolutely.
And let it go. I mean, this isn't the, this isn't the magic, oh, it's getting changed now, because.
And, and that's.
I remember those conversations, now that you've refreshed my memory, and they were good conversations on, on ability to, to live somewhere affordably, and not in the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar home on five acres.
So my problem with this, planning and zoning just went over this, we just went over this, and we're going to do it again. I understand, this is brought before us, we've looked at this, of course, we're going to make a decision right now, whether we move this forward, but this wasn't like it was done ten years ago. This was done very recently, by both Planning and Zoning and us. And we, we came, we settled where we settled.
And.
You want to make a motion for it?
The, the community's influence, I think, is very impactful, and I want to respect it. I'll move the Board of County Commissioners forward the proposed zoning text amendment to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and recommendation.
I'm going to second that, because we have to get this right.
Exactly.
So you think we got it wrong?
But you think we got it wrong.
That's right.
Nobody says it's wrong, but.
We had all these, I don't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry, but we had all these discussions. We talked about this, when we went over this, we, we just did this.
I apologize, we have a motion and a second, now it's open for discussion.
Sorry.
Thank you. No, no, and that's fine, I just, you know, when we did the baby property, we took a lot of steps back, because we had to get it right. And we took, I mean, it was very significant on the Planning and Zoning, I mean, many, many steps. Dan Huff, you know, was up there with me, and he's like, we got to slow this down and get it right, and get the right mixture. And, you know, that's what this is. And there's enough dialogue that's been havin', happening, that I want to do what's best for our community. It ain't about constituents, it's about the community, and it's about the neighborhood, and let's get it right. And, and you're right, they may come back and say, no, we got it right, enough of this. And that's their responsibility as well, from Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, I'm going to approach this from a personal standpoint, want to vote for this, because I'm going to vote for it. Because I do think we need to hear from the public, but from, you know, from a governmental standpoint, I just think this is, this is wrong to go back and, I, I hate, I, 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 I very much dislike the phrase, "we have to get this right," because you automatically assume that it's wrong. And I dislike that phrase. I always have, because I, I sit down there, and I see.
We all have.
The work that they do. And, and, you know, the, the things that they, they discuss and all of that, and, and I just, I don't think, I just don't think that the timing is right here for this. But because I think it's important to hear from, from citizens, I'd be the same way. I mean, I've had a couple of things out my way that, you know, that got this far, but they, no. I will say that they didn't get this far, because the citizens came out strongly before it got to this point. That's the thing that I most appreciated by the citizens out in my area. Because they came out in strength and said, oh, no, that's not what we're going to do. So now it seems like, you know, we're, we're, we're going to. So now it seems like, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna throw a flag and say, even though we're ahead by one point, we're going into overtime. And that does, that just, I don't like that, and I don't like, again, we need to get this right.
Well, maybe the-
We've, we, we, we based our decisions thinking we had it right based on all the work that's been done.
Right.
And I think it's borderline disrespectful to all the work that's been done. But again, you know how I'm gonna vote on this, so maybe the debate's over because I do appreciate the citizens coming out. But I just, I don't-
I'm not gonna argue.
Okay, call for, call for a vote. All in favor of motion? Aye.
Aye reluctantly.
Against?
Oppose.
Okay, three, two.
So just so I can be clear, was the motion specifically for the residential portion?
You gotta watch the, you gotta watch the video.
Absolutely. Because if not, I want another vote, because I will not have this reopened for everything else. This is only for that, and I'm against that.
Okay, thank you.
Because I believe there's really a place for that here in this county.
Okay.
So, but it, it's just that part only.
Thank you for your time this morning.
Okay, thank you. Quality Performance Review Service for nine-one-one operations. Mr. Campbell. Jack? Oh, Mr. Brown's out there, okay, cool.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can we actually use that, that term rather liberally?
Thank you.
Commissioners, uh, as you said, Commissioner Rusty, we're, we're here today to discuss Quality Performance Review Service for nine-one-one operations. Specifically, as referenced in the, in the brief, there's an industry standard for oversight of nine-one-one operations, and it includes a, a thorough, um, Quality Performance Review effort. Along those lines, or a, as a result of, of that oversight need, a request was put together and presented to the Maryland nine-one-one board at their October twenty-seventh meeting of, uh, I guess it's a week ago, requesting one hundred forty thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars to fund a proposed three-year agreement with the International Academies of Emergency Dispatches, known as I A E D, to provide this much-needed service. The board approved that request in the form of paying one hundred percent of it. As a result, there would be no county funding necessary to proceed if that's your discretion. Uh, the agreement proposed today will ensure that the services that we already have with the I A E D for this service, a one-year term, would be extended seamlessly with, without interruption. And I believe that, uh, and I'm very happy to have, uh, Jack Brown with us, uh, to join me today. He's the manager of the Emergency Communications Center, nine-one-one center, and I think, uh, you have documented the improvements from the existing contract, and we wanna maintain, if not improve, uh, increase those improvements as a result of this.
I think we should have to pay for ourselves. Just kidding.
So what you having, what you having places working now?
It is, um, so it is a requirement to do the quality assurance review of the, of the protocols. Um, short of having people, um, this is the, the process that, that, that we've gone through. So the, the numbers board does fund, fund these types of things, um, and Ashley can, Ashley and Amanda can speak to some improvements, but yes, we have seen a, a significant improvement over the past year of this process.
And Commissioner, I apologize, if I could like to recognize other important members of our staff. We have Ms. Ashley Bergen and Ms. Amanda Poor here, they're both assistant managers in Jack's operation. So make your ladies, I apologize.
Well, it seems like a no-brainer to me if it's working and you wanna do two more years.
Three more, Commissioner.
Three more years, then we roll, right? So I'll make the motion that we accept the funding offered by the nine-one-one board and authorize the Director of Public Safety to execute the proposed agreement with the, uh, I A E D, including the payment of the bills.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second, any discussion on this? Seeing here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Deep up to good work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ladies. Um, Exella Land Management System Annual Maintenance and Support Renewal.
Seems like we do this every year.
Couldn't be annually, never.
Groundhog stuff.
Really?
Those last two decisions you guys made, I have to make, I have to be-
Okay, that's fine.
Oh my goodness, okay.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with Technology Services requests your approval toward the renewal for the Exella annual maintenance and support services to Exella in the amount of one hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirteen cents. This amount is within the adopted budget.
Good morning Commissioners, Charlie Beckart with Technology Services. With your concurrence today, we will execute year two of a three-year agreement with Exella for maintenance, uh, software support and upgrades. As you're aware, Exella is at the core of our integrated land management system and is used every day by multiple agencies, which are mentioned in your executive summary, and, uh, many of our external partners as well. And so, um, this is, uh, this is a routine renewal for software support.
Even annual, I hear.
I'll make the motion, the Board of Commissioners award the renewal of Exella Annual Maintenance and Support Services to, believe it or not, Exella, in the amount of one hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
Got a motion, second and discussion? Seeing here, none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye. Well, he, he's feeling bad over here, so I figured I'd go with this one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
That was a hard one.
Let's talk about the FY twenty-three cardiac devices grant application.
It's close to my heart, let's go. Let's talk about it among ourselves.
You're pushing it down, Fraser. You're pushing it, Fraser.
Is Michael here?
He's out, walking down the hallway.
That's right, come on in. We're now gonna talk about the FY twenty-three cardiac devices grant application.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
So, uh, here this morning to ask for the, uh, matching grant from the MEMS, um, fifty-fifty grant process. Annually, the, uh, state offers out to the different jurisdictions the ability to, to match a state pricing to get a, uh, grant, which was about fifty percent of the cost. Um, right now, our total project that we submitted to the state was sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. So we're looking for approval for the county matching of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seven cents.
That's not what the paper says, Mike. Briefing paper says thirty-three, one, thirty-five, fourteen. So what, what, what are you saying?
Okay, the, the updated one is thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seven cents.
That's cheaper, so you're on a, you're on a roll, baby.
It is cheaper, I'm going the right way. Going the right way with that, so we did have to have some, uh, concessions through Region Three, which is the different jurisdictions in the, uh, the state there, um, to where we, instead of a fifty-fifty grant this year, it was a forty-eight, fifty-two. That's why we had some changes in the numbers.
Okay.
Okay.
We were gonna, we apply for, uh, not for grant, we, we're gonna pay for this ourselves originally, is what you're saying, then we got this grant to pay for half of it?
Yeah, we were gonna come to you and ask for this full price. We were gonna come to you and ask for this full price, and then we were able to get into this grant process.
Okay, when you were gonna come for us for full price, that wasn't in the budget?
Yes, it is in the budget. It is in the budget? Yes, it is.
Well, then how come the, the county matched for the grant that says it's not in the budget, not budgeted?
No, it's, it's in the current budget, it's part of the funding as part of the complete package for staffing, fire, EMS, including the equipment for the, um, chase cars. So now we're actually-
Okay, so it is, it is in the budget, is it?
Correct, yeah, so the grant came available and we were able to reduce the cost.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
They're saving money, Commissioner.
Yeah, I got that, but I just wanted-
And it's in the budget, as opposed to what it's, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So who captured the price, 'cause I apologize, I did not.
What was it, Mike, thirty-one?
Thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seven cents is what I, just off the top of my head.
Thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seven cents.
Sixty dollars.
Seven cents?
Seven cents.
Okay, therefore, would you like to make the motion?
Make the mo- motion that the Board of County Commissioners approve the submission of FY twenty-three cardiac monitor devices grant application and accept award. Do I need to have that amount in there? The board authorized this thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seven cents in matching funds if awarded.
I'm opposed to the seven cents.
I got a motion, I got a second, I got discussion about seven cents.
Hold on a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about amendments to Carroll County Code of Public Law, Local Laws and ordinances, Chapter thirty-seven, Fire and Emergency Medical Services. Chris, we have anybody on the phone for this?
No, sir, was just trying to catch up on that last motion, thank you.
Okay, when you get a seven cents, please let me know. Um, do we have anybody in the public that wants to talk on this?
I gotta real quick, I, I didn't have time to give you the card.
If you're going to, I mean, let me know, okay?
I can, I'll give a card here in a second. I'm Michael Carolenko, um, I am a county resident and president of the Carroll County Professional Firefighters and Paramedics. Um, I think the biggest thing I would just like to say is, uh, over the course, especially the last four years, but you know, all the way back to twenty seventeen when this whole process and conversation started, um, this board in particular has done a lot to move forward and get this process, uh, moving, and then continuing to move it forward. You know, obviously, there's always concerns and there's things that poke up that, um, with every facet of what we're facing, but, um, I, I would like to take the opportunity, I think it's the last time of, in this forum, being able to stand in front of you in some kind of, um, partner conversation to say thank you for the investment and for what you've done to move this forward. Um, you know, it, this is necessary. And I think the fight, the future, you know, given all the, all the, uh, continued uphill battles maybe we have and all the things that extend far beyond the fire and EMS service and the kind of cultural and other concerns that we have right now, we're moving in a good direction, and I think that that started, and that maintained momentum here within this board, so I really do appreciate that. Thank you for your open ear, uh, through this whole process, uh, hearing on this. I think that at the, the end of this board's time, being able to pass Chapter thirty-seven, um, you know, and obviously hearing our concerns leading up to it, um, is a, is a great capstone to, that your tenure here. So, uh, on, on our, uh, I guess on behalf of us, we thank you for that investment and, um, that, that movement. So we look forward to hearing the conversation, thank you.
Thanks, and I appreciate using the word capstone because I was thinking cradle to grave, and I don't want this to be in the grave. So cradle to capstone is a much better way of capturing this, so, uh-
Especially in their line of work, no graves.
Can I call you chief now?
Well, that, that's up to you all.
Okay, go ahead.
We, we've had our deliberations on this, um, there will be a, a, a long future ahead, and hopefully it's gonna be a very cooperative one between all the entities. Um, I can't stress enough the criticality of us being able to move forward, uh, with our hiring. We're working every day right now with H R, developing a schedule, and at the same time, uh, the, the, the needs for emergency services are constant each day. It's becoming a greater challenge under our current staffing system. For example, we dispatched five ambulances the other day for someone that fell off a roof in Hampstead. Um, so we, the quicker we can get things in place, the better off the-
You dispatched five ambulances?
Yes. Because they were all understaffed, and it took that many to get two people that could make a crew. And so the sooner we can get moving with the hiring-
I thought it was a, uh, I thought it was an M C I when it came across my phone.
Yeah, well, I, I was on my way in and I almost-
Acronyms, mass casualty incident.
Yes, I almost, I almost drove over there just so I could get in the back of an ambulance to work.
When I looked at it, I said, there's something going on.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so I made a phone call, and they said, no, not really, just can't get anybody over there. I'm like, uh, okay, never mind.
But there was no mu- no mutual support from Baltimore County or from, uh-
Well, we ended up, the, the unit from Baltimore County came in mutual aid from Upper Co., which is right there at Hampstead, so, um, a- again, passing Chapter thirty-seven will enable us to be able to move forward, advertise the positions, and, uh, moving to hire the lieutenants first, as we've discussed, and then we're gonna see where the hiring process is for all the other positions, so.
Yeah, capturing these comments are very important on how we're moving forward, and I really appreciate all the work that's been done, so.
And we have to maintain the quality of people that we're gonna hire. We're looking to get people that are gonna stay here, and people are gonna come work in Carroll County for not just monetary reasons, because it's Carroll County, and we're gonna try to create a very positive culture within fire and EMS, and people are gonna wanna come here to work.
It was his birthday the other day, can you recruit him, or is he-
Well, we did recognize that, and, uh, as long as he can get through the physical ability test.
At his age?
Forget it.
Hey, 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 wait a minute now. Although I did, I did gain like three pounds last night with a birthday cake, but whatever.
Didn't give us any.
So-
So I'm just saying.
So, uh, I was, I wasn't here for the hearing. Are you, you done, Mike? I don't wanna cut you off.
Yes, I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, good. You and I cut each other off a lot, though, maybe it's, you know, whatever, anyway. Uh, I wasn't here for the hearing, I did watch the hearing. Uh, I, I will again say that I was embarrassed by the hearing with some of the comments that were, were made there. You know, what, what, what continues to challenge me is, you know, lost in the mix of all this glitz and glamour of, of, uh, you know, well, that's what they do, so we have to do it, is the fact that we have an incredibly strong volunteer presence here that needs not to be forgotten anytime soon. And I will continue to say that when, even when I'm not in this seat, because we're only here because of the incredible amount of work that the volunteers have done in this county. And I'll leave it at that. I do have a question on the overtime. Um, I'm, the, the, can, can we just quickly-
Sure.
Sit on that for a minute and go over that real-
Yes.
And you, you sent us something, um, about the, what the law enforcement is getting here, uh, and I wanna just briefly touch on that. And this is where we need to get it right does come into play, because we haven't done this yet. So now you can use, "We need to get this right."
Now, wait a minute, you're picking, choosing what I can use, we gotta do it right.
I'm picking on you, Weaver, because I can.
Well, I believe we need to do it right.
That was a, that was a big win, small world comment, don't worry about it.
Always wanna do it right.
So, yeah, so let, touch on that again.
Yeah, so I think everybody understands, we're, we're following the letter of the law, Fair Labor Standards Act, and what's known as the two-oh-seven K exemption. So anyone who is a fire and EMS person, meaning they're credentialed to do both-
Or just fire.
Or just fire, uh, falls under the exemption, which means that, uh, we're gonna base it on a twenty-eight day work cycle. So in that twenty-eight day work cycle with the twenty-four, seventy-two shift configuration, uh, they will come out at the end of that twenty-two days, if they work no extra time, working a hundred and sixty, uh, eight hours. The threshold for overtime is two hundred and twelve hours. So that leaves them forty-four hours short of being able to make overtime, so when we have-
Overtime being defined as traditionally time and a half.
Yes.
Okay.
So the scenario is, if I work an extra shift, I'm working that at straight time. If I'm working at Pleasant Valley, and we get a cardiac arrest at six A M., we normally relieve at seven, I don't get back till nine, I'm getting two hours of my straight time pay. And so in comparison with, um, other agents, the only other agency that's under a two-oh-seven K exemption would be the sheriffs, it's defined a little bit differently of law enforcement versus fire EMS, but the reality is, if they work over on a call, they will get time and a half. And if they work extra shifts, they will get time and a half, so.
And that's based on their shift configuration now?
Correct, so they're working in a two-week cycle, and in that two-week cycle, it's, I believe it comes out to eighty-six hours or eighty hours, but the bottom line is, they get time and a half overtime for everything beyond that.
Beyond eighty hours.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, understand that this doesn't mean if we, if the decision was made to pay the overtime, no one's gonna get that overtime unless they work extra time. So it wouldn't be each pay period that all X number of personnel are gonna get automatically forty-four hours of time and a half. You'll only get it when you work.
That extra forty-
Right, so the challenge will be-
Hour or two or three.
Right. So every hour beyond that, if you would, um, decide to go in the other direction, would be at time and a half. So we don't anticipate in the first two years that being much, 'cause all leave will be scheduled, there'll be unanticipated sick leave, but we're gonna have, um, four floaters between, in this fiscal year, then next year adding two floaters, so that gives us six positions to backfill on duty without paying overtime. So the overtime would be infrequent. Moving forward in the future, there's gonna be an increased liability for overtime. We're gonna see people that modified duty, pregnancy, what have you. But, um, so in planning for this, we just went by the letter of the law, which was follow the two-oh-seven K exemption- But, so, in planning for this, we just went by the letter of the law, which was follow the 207K exemption and good, bad, or indifferent, working the shortest work week that's available for fire and EMS, 42 hours, which is an optimal shift. You end up with that deficit. We also, I did a survey through the Maryland Metro Chiefs and only got a few respondents, but the jurisdictions that did respond are paying time and a half for everything. They already made that decision going forward. And if you saw my survey, you saw the amount of money that some of the jurisdictions were paying, which struck me, because one of them I know was Queen Anne's County, which they're not even staffing fire, they're just staffing EMS and the other counties that responded. And then our friend across the river in Fairfax County, I don't know if you saw that, $39 million.
My goodness.
For overtime in one year.
That's a little bit different because of the...
Yeah, the different scenario.
Number of bodies coming into play, and that's, that's huge. So, not the bodies are huge, the amount of...
Right, right.
Number of them.
Number of bodies. Some of the bodies may be huge.
So, that's where we are in terms of making that decision. If there's anything negative about it, it would be, if we can't find people to work overtime because they have to reach that threshold, they may decide, hey, we're not working overtime, then the scenario that presents itself would be something called a holdover. So, you're planning on getting off at 7:00 this morning. You've got some family event or vacation planned. We're going to, it's mandatory part of your job condition that we're holding you over. You're not going home. So, two, two problematic things with that. Number one, it's not going to make employees happy. We don't see that happening much. But the other issue is going to be, we've now got a person who's worked for 24 hours, and in places like Westminster and Sykesville, in that 24 hours, they may have run 20 calls. So, they're now fatigued, and the question becomes is, what's their judgment and decision-making capability?
Couple of just quick questions. One is, is there, in this, a periodic review? Like every two years, you will be going through this, or every five years, or...
This is, this will be in your ordinance. So, you know, so it would go through, sorry?
You'd have to open it back up.
You'd have to open it back up, the public hearing process. So, so once you make the decision, I would say it's pretty difficult to go backwards and to take away. If you were to go up to the, you know, say, they, staff members, firefighters and fire EMS would start receiving overtime at a certain number of hours, 168 or, or somewhere, that you have to at 212. But it's somewhere in between then. To go backwards and to reduce that down to the 168, I would say would probably be very difficult.
Yeah. The other, the other thing that I just think is important to mention is we will be hiring some employees that are paramedics only, meaning they have no firefighter qualifications. So, under FLSA, if all they do is EMS, they're automatically, anything after 40 hours, they'll be paid at time and a half. So, what we're doing within the workforce by, the result of that is creating some disparity among those employees. And that's, that's just something that, you know, we'll have to deal with.
Although, that is the federal law, too. I mean, we're not, you know, we didn't decide that.
Mandatory holdover scenario? Is that time and a half granted?
No, that'll be at straight time till they reach that 44-hour threshold.
If they're a firefighter or firefighter EMS.
If they're a paramedic and they're on a mandatory holdover, then automatically they get overtime, starting at minute number one.
Chief Robinson, I want to express my sincere appreciation to you, doing the research and analysis on all this to give us an in-depth understanding. And the county administrator for Ford to us, I think it, these numbers put things in perspective. Looking at the Frederick County numbers, they said he had 6.8 million in overtime associated in fiscal year '22, and he only had 3.7 million budgeted. So, that shows the exposure that takes place with bringing it down. And also, I really appreciate your clarification on the difference in law enforcement hours versus the hours used by EMS staff staying on, you know, 24 hours, whatever the cycle is. So, it does create a different scenario. These numbers are very informative, so thank you.
Well, and I'm not going to take credit. It's a team effort here. So, between the county administrator, office of budget, and the comptroller particularly, Cheryl and payroll, they have a very good working knowledge of this and how it's going to impact everything, so...
Thanks for giving them recognition.
Well, that's what it's all about, is we're a team here, and we can't do it all ourselves, and we want to make sure we're giving you valid information.
Thank you very much.
That's good.
Well, information's important.
Yeah, valid is good.
I, I, I have to say, I don't like the discrepancy between what the paramedics will get on overtime and what the firefighters and EMS get on overtime. I, I think that's potential for causing some problems within the firehouse, and I don't like discrepancy for what the sheriff's department's getting overtime with the fire and EMS getting overtime. I, I don't, I don't like that either. I think, my opinion, money one, Weaver back off.
Learn that.
That if...
Yep. He said yet.
That if you work overtime, you should get time and a half. That's my opinion of it. If it's, if it's one hour, if you're held over...
Beyond your scheduled, let's just, beyond your scheduled hours, because...
Yes, yeah, yes. That's what, if you work beyond your scheduled hours, you should get time and a half, my opinion.
To include the mandatory overtime, or mandatory holdover?
Yes.
That includes that?
Yeah, that's fine. I, I hope we get away from this mandatory holdover stuff. I'm, I am incredibly against that, and I hope that discussion stops, because I hope that you set yourself up that, and I know you will, Mike, you and your team will set us up that that will rarely happen, because working 24, been there, done that. I don't even want to, I don't even want you to whisper to me anything about MHO. So, I don't want to hear it.
Is that an acronym?
Yeah, another one. If we decided, I'm, I'm hung up on this letter of the law that we keep talking about. If we decide that we don't want to go by the 207K when it comes, when it pertains to the overtime, what does that mean to this letter of the law conversation?
Nothing, that's fine. No, it's totally your...
That's purely the prerogative of the governmental agency employees.
You have to pay, you know, some overtime rate after 212 hours.
Okay.
Prior to that, if you want to be more generous, you're welcome to.
Okay. I'm going to agree with my colleague.
Do it all the time.
I truly believe that the time and a half is important, especially coming off of a 24. And again, I've, I've lived it, and I appreciated that, and I sincerely believe that it's not going to be a huge impact fiscally to us for at least the first two or three years. It might after that, once we get the force to the numbers that we're hoping we get them to. But I just don't know that it's going to be that huge of a fiscal impact at this point. So, I'm all about Chapter 37. I'm ready to make that motion, with the exception of adding the fact that if you work over your scheduled time, you would receive time and a half. That's my motion.
Is that actually a motion?
Yes, that's, I'm going to make that motion. It's still open for discussion, but I'll move that we adopt Chapter 37 with the change of anything regardless of title over your scheduled time gets you time and a half.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion. I got a second. Open for discussion. When you said regardless of title...
Well, because we were, we were talking about paramedics versus fire, firefighter EMS.
And supervision supervisors are regardless of...
No, no, wait a minute.
Still not pay overtime to exempt employees. This is only for non-exempt.
This is non-exempt.
Okay.
Let me add that. I want to be clear. Non-exempt employees.
I don't get every, okay.
Yeah, thank, thank you. I'd like to get some of that.
I'll second that amended.
Stoner's getting ready to pick up a chair and throw it at me, but non-exempt employees.
Okay.
What, what impact does this have on our budget?
Right, that would be my...
I apologize. So, I got a motion that has been now amended. And second to that amended motion, the discussion's now open, and your, your question is about the budget. What is this?
What impact does this have on our budget?
I, I would concur with Commissioner Wance that probably in the first two years and myself and my staff, we're running, we've run these multiple scenarios of what's going to happen. I, I think we're being responsible out of the gate by having scheduled leave and your approval of allowing us to have floaters up to six on each shift is going to offset, I would say, at least for the first two years, because of our numbers, going to offset the majority of that. We're going to be keeping the data on all of that, because it's all through the VTI system, and we're not going to be the only ones monitoring that. Budget's going to be monitoring that. Payroll's going to be monitoring that. And we hope to be able to forecast where that may occur. What is unforeseen is we could have another COVID or a similar pandemic that could have a bigger impact, but again, that would be an emergent situation that we would, you know, the whole county government would be managed differently in a situation like that. So, I, I see it being minimal impact at this time, but where the real impact might be is several people each week are probably going to get a late shift call, and we're looking at an hour, two hours here and there, which is really negligible. The, the impact's about $12 an hour per employee per hour.
The impact, so, so I, I believe I understand what's been shared. There is a greater impact expected in the outer years.
Yes.
Because the force will be put together.
As we get force multiplier in there.
Exactly. So, in years four, five, and six, you know, has a potential of being a concern. But the first two, three years, you know, it's, it's negligible. So, okay. Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Wait. Don't, don't approve that motion. We have some technical difficulties with it.
Sure.
Yeah. Our, our excellent payroll manager wants to make sure that we get this right. So, I believe we need to say, and Cheryl will correct me if I'm wrong, that they, that the over, the time and a half for non-exempt employees would occur after they've reached the 168 hours.
Do you want to get to the table?
In excess of 168 hours in the 28-day period. Yes.
Yeah.
If I could come up with...
Yeah.
Or, there's no, there's no, there's no ors.
Unless you're on a boat.
We need kind of like a base for the pension and stuff like that. So, when, if you want to be more liberal on the 207K, you can pick a period of time, like 14-day period, and you could set a quota. You don't have to, like, 168 is based when he's trying to do it like on a, a four-week cycle, the 42 hours a week.
Right.
So, it's really 212, anything, but they would technically be working 168 hours in that four weeks. And then, the law provides for it, anything over that amount. For the pension and stuff like that, if you want to technically use it, you can always be more liberal, but you need to drill down to the pay period, like either choose a 14-day cycle, and that's 106 hours, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. And you can make it more liberal, anything over the base of 80 hours in a two-week period. And for that, or you could go with a 14...
But their schedule is so odd. They'll earn, they'll work a lot of hours in one, two-week period and very few hours in a second. That's why we're going with a 28-day period, is my understanding. So, so even for the...
Three 48-hour weeks, then one 24-hour week.
Yeah. So, even if we, the baseline for the pension can still be the 28-days period.
You could.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's where I was going to, that was my question. Why not just make the pension base, the base salary?
The 168 hours.
168, or whatever it is.
Yeah. I guess what, it depends on how you write the 207K and how you do that, if you have that thing. But I'm not very familiar enough to say and talk about the pension side of it. I'm only familiar with the 207K.
The payroll. I don't think, I don't...
If the 168 hours is the base, then you would make the overtime, if you want to be more liberal, you could say, you want to pay at the 168 hours after it reaches the four-week period.
In the 28 days.
That was your intent, right?
That was my intent, yes. Yeah.
That's my intent on the second as well.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Just making sure.
Yeah, no, I, yeah. Yeah, I don't want to get, I don't want to get in there and start messing with pension stuff. That's a whole nother...
Exactly.
That is a whole different...
So, I believe the pension's still going to be based on a 2080-hour annual base versus the 2186 that on, based on the schedule is what they work.
Right, right. Okay.
Yeah.
Does that clear as mud, then?
Not, well, it's clear on the 207, what your, your impact is, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I was just thrown off when you said liberal a couple times in this conversation, but that's a different topic, a different time.
Well, it's being more generous.
I understand.
Generous. I guess it's the word that I used. So, it's just being more generous.
Okay.
So...
My, my motion stands with that, making sure that the number's correct. But we're here for another 31 days. If you need to come back to us because of that pension thing, you've got time.
It's not a problem.
In case there's a tweak that needs to be done. But the intent here that we did was to make sure that that time and a half was after...
168 hours.
168 hour.
In the 28-day period.
In the 28-day period.
For non-exempt employees.
Non-exempt employees.
I'm just glad people are paying attention. They didn't hear right away on this. This is great.
Oh, yeah. We have just-in-time delivery.
Okay.
Walmart may not, but we do.
I got a motion. I got a second. I got clarification and discussion. Is there any further clarification or discussion necessary at this time? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
A lot of work.
Okay, let's talk about the Charles Carroll Community Center, the Ruling Associates Incorporated. Activity or work that's being done? Hello?
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with Bureau of Building Construction requests your approval to increase the contract to Ruling Associates for testing and inspection services in the amount of $50,000. Commissioners, a majority of these additional costs are associated with the unforeseen circumstances during site development at the beginning of the project. This amount is within the adopted budget. No additional funds will be necessary.
Okay. Who wants to talk?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Talk to us about what Ruling Incorporated is going to do?
Yes. Good morning. The Bureau of Building Construction is here for you today to request board approval to award additional testing and inspection services to Ruling Associates, as stated. Ruling is a term contracting firm to perform construction-related material inspections and testing for the Charles Carroll Community Center project. Those testing and inspection services include compaction, concrete breaks, and proof rolling of the sub-slope in preparation of the above-mentioned. We're currently at 80% completion of site work. We estimate two to three months of additional testing and inspection services. Thus, the remaining 20% of testing and inspection services includes, includes the above-mentioned and also the D cell lane, which is yet to start, as I spoke with Commissioner Wance the other day. Our original budgeted amount for this was $178,300. The original estimated cost that we came before you, beforehand for Ruling Associates was $32,993. Again, as mentioned, the additional services is estimated at $50,000, which brings us to a total of $82,993, which is still under estimated budget. These costs are, yeah, and no additional funds are requested, I'm sorry. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You, you hit stuff you didn't think you were going to hit. So, they got to keep making sure that we're not going to have any ramifications or whatever after that. So, it's, it's within the budget, so, you know, we got to keep these guys engaged up there. So, I'll move we increase contractor ruling in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
Nobody's found.
What's that?
Nobody's found.
Got a motion, got a second.
Still looking for Chuck. Haven't found him yet. Have you found him yet?
I have not.
No, Chuck's up there somewhere, we think.
Yes.
Chuck Carroll.
You're, you're very fam, you're BFFs. You're very familiar with them. That's why you call them Chuck.
A lot of people calling Charles, but, you know.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
No.
Seeing here none, all in favor? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Want to talk about that?
Let's talk about the three options. The Department of County Commission on how to address the existing condition of the upper parking lot at Charles Carroll Community Center. So you're going to give us three options, huh?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you again for your time this morning. Again, we're here before you to discuss Charles Carroll Community Center. Joining me today is Deputy Director Eric Burdine. Kirk Engel, our project manager for the project. We are here to present three paving options to what we refer to as the upper parking lot at the community center. This was the, or is the existing parking lot that has been there and was used to service the tennis courts, basketball courts, and now is incorporated into the overall design and parking for the community center. So we had met with our general contractor. We had performed some additional geotechnical testing and evaluations of the subgrade condition of that parking lot. Based on that information, our contractor has three options that we wanted to bring before you this morning and hopefully get your direction on which one of these three options to proceed with. And Kirk's going to present these two, these three options to you. And then afterwards, if you have any questions, comments, we'll be happy to address those. Thank you.
Good morning again, Commissioners. All three options are based on the useful life and respective paving options, as John mentioned, upon frequency of use and the types of vehicular traffic that'll be using the, the community center grounds. Option one is per the contract with North Point Builders, this is built in already within their line item, includes for milling and overlaying of the existing parking lot with no subgrade repairs. The lifespan under this option is two to five years. No additional funds for this option will be needed. Option two is using a geotextile fabric. This is an overlay and apply surface course of paving over top of that overlay. The cost for option two includes 40,000 per the contract work that was originally built in within the budget, and additional 56 is what the cost is for this option, 56,000.
Now, wait a minute. Say that again, Kirk. 40,000 was, is what's in the budget.
40,000 was the contract work.
So this, if we, if we pick option two, we're looking at another, an additional 16,000?
No.
No? An additional 56?
All the prices that he's given you.
Are above?
Are over and above the original contract value. The original contract value for, for all three of these options. Option one, that would cost you no extra, was 40,000. That's what they have in the budget for that work.
Okay. All right.
Everything else, all the other changes subtracted that out.
Okay. All right.
Lifespan under this scenario is approximately 10 years. The contractor stated in the event paving repairs or repaving work is needed, it will be costly and difficult to remove the geotextile fabric. However, in speaking with Bosley Contracting, who's a contractor on-site that will be doing this work, they have used this option many times in Baltimore County with very good results. Also, in speaking with our facilities department, they have had good results as well in the two times that they have used it as well. Option three is a complete removal and replacement. This option will have a lifespan of approximately 20-plus years. This cost will be 161,360. Although this is the most costly option, is our recommendation to proceed with this option. It will provide a long-lasting product and will best serve the users of the community center by new, for the new parking lot for many years to come.
You know, if you look at these three, you have a Band-Aid, a bigger Band-Aid, and do it right.
Well, it's one way to look. Were you done?
That's a good way to put it, yes.
I'm sorry.
Done? I was.
Okay.
But that, if we're going to do it, I mean, we've got a new center there, got everything, and I've learned one thing. If you're going to do it, don't halfway do it. Almost said the wrong thing. But, you know, I think we have to do it that's going to last for a period of time. I know. Don't have a heart attack on it. At your age.
Are you getting ready to say, "Do it right"? We need to do this right? Is that what you were getting?
Yes, yes. I'm using that term again. You got me started now. It's kind of wonky.
As long as you don't scoot anywhere. As long as you don't scoot anywhere.
If option one is utilized, how long would it last?
That's the two to, two to five years. And it's.
That's the two to five years. And I even asked, is there any subgrade work that would happen? And those of you that were on-site for the tour, whether you've come back and viewed the site or not, it is in bad shape. There are alligator cracks, what they call alligator cracks, all over the upper parking lot. It's, it's rough. So it is literally just a.
So?
It is.
So it actually fell there? That's how bad it is.
I didn't want to bring that up, Commissioner.
I'd help him back up.
But, so, I mean, it is literally just a mill of what's existing and overlay on top of that, and that is it. No subgrade work or anything like that. Again, option two is basically using the geotextile fabric, which is very strong. It, it works very well. I even spoke with the manufacturer. I said, is there a warranty or a, you know, somewhat of a guarantee as to how long this lasts? And there's just too many variables involved as far as what, what kind of traffic is on there, you know, what types of vehicles and so forth. So again, that's going to last you a good 10 years or more.
How long, how long has this geotech fabric been used in construction, in parking lots?
Oh, many years.
So it's got a history of?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So.
We had selected the mid-grade because it comes in a five, what they call 500, 600, and a 700. 500 is just your very basic, 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 you know, driveways, things of that sort. 600 are used for, you know, business areas, parking lots, things of that sort, community centers, if you want to apply it to this project. 700's overkill because we originally thought, well, gosh, well, I guess we need 700, but that's mainly used on bridges, overpasses, things of that sort. So the 600 grade is, is the 56 that I presented to you.
So with the 600 grade on a parking lot, the projection's only going to last for 10 years?
10, 10 years, give or take, yes.
Okay.
Why was this not budgeted in the original cost estimate?
When we originally looked at the project, we, we thought a mill and overlay would be sufficient for that parking lot. And, and, you know, the, the geotechnical has confirmed, we could still do a mill and overlay, but it's not going to last as long as.
You're, I mean, you're coming to us now for better solutions. Why would you think that option one, the mill and overlay, would have been suitable? I mean, yes, it's, you know, it's feasible, but it doesn't sound like it's, you know, the correct course of action to take.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, it's been more years than we anticipated for this project to get off the ground and running and constructed. So the, the parking lot has degraded more than we anticipated it to degrade over that time. And the construction traffic hasn't helped.
This is about as close to a change order as I'm going to see without calling it a change order because the original estimate was the option one, the mill and overlay, and now you're coming to us wanting 100, not you, I apologize, but collectively 160,000 more to get it done right.
I'd actually say it's almost a change in scope on, you know, of the project because this wasn't, this, you know, totally renovating the parking lot wasn't anticipated initially, so.
Yeah.
It's really bigger than a change order in some respects.
Which makes it even more concerning that we didn't see this scope, we didn't see this as a part of the overall scope of the community center.
Well, with all due respect to our staff, we were, they were focused on the building and the site, and I don't know that there was a whole lot of attention paid to the parking lot. And it was still being utilized. It was, there was parking there every day because the ball field was still being used. So I'm.
I would.
I mean, I just, I, I, I get that, but yet, in the grand scheme of things, the deeper you got into this project, the more that we saw that it just, that isn't going to cut it. And again, as you say, we didn't anticipate the delay because, you know, I warned Kirk many times, if I didn't walk in the door as a commissioner, that he was fired. So there was that because it did get delayed, but, you know, COVID knocked the crap out of the project. So, and then finally, again, we were, I think, focusing on the project itself and the parking lot below and not necessarily looking at what was above. But in order to do the project, a lot of things have been parked there over the last year and a half. Big stuff. So it's contributed to the, to the, to the degrading of the, of the surface up there.
Yeah, I'm not against us.
Yeah.
I'm asking the hard questions because, again, we're using not, you know, we're using above and beyond, and it's our taxpayers, and, you know, we've already gone through this where not everybody was for putting Charles Carroll in place, you know? And, you know, most of us were. This is above and beyond, so that's why I'm.
Understood, Commissioner. And we, we were, we were, I mean, the budget that we were originally handed was not, was really not sufficient for the, for the project. So we, I mean, we did, we were trying to pull everything in that we could, and this was, I mean, we thought we could, we thought we, we honestly thought that we could mill and overlay this parking lot, but again, time, time hasn't been kind to it, and neither has been the construction traffic.
If we use the geotech 700 material, how long would the parking lot last then, as opposed to the 600?
The contractor's estimating, you could probably get a 10, 10-plus years. They've, they've had it, they've had it down in parking lots where it's well over 10 years old.
You're talking about the 700.
The 700. The 700. I don't know that that makes much of a difference. I, I think our, our big concern, after talking to the contractor about, about that option, is what we do in the future. If, if we, if we ever do want to pull this parking lot up and, and do what we're saying now, which is completely remove and replace, that fabric makes it a lot more difficult.
And expensive.
It's not something that's going to be easily milled and overlaid at a, at a future point. You, you'll be able to overlay it, you'll just have to do a very thin milling. So the parking lot will continue to get thicker, I guess, is what.
It's about the base. It's gone. It's somehow, and I think running heavy equipment over it has just shown where the weak points are. And you put fabric over top, yes, the fabric's tough and it's going to hold. I don't think it's that hard to take up. But the material is going to sink the same places. We're not doing anything other than here again, putting a bigger Band-Aid on a problem. And our, our responsibility is to solve problems. I don't like the cost overrun. I don't like where this is going, but sometimes things happen.
I mean, challenge, I mean, I applaud the work you're doing. There's no doubt. You know, the challenge is measuring twice, cutting once, you know, and having the ability to foresee these concerns as construction occurs. But I get it. I mean, it's, it's hard work, and it's sometimes harder to come in front of us and say, this is additional cost that we need. But, I mean, like you said, it's the right thing to do. And I do take the analogy, Band-Aid, Band-Aid, or get it done right and fix. So, so.
Based on option two or three, are those costs that you've put here locked? Is this?
Yes.
Because, yeah, because blacktop and.
I know.
All associated costs are going up every, I was going to say every day, but I think it's almost like every hour now.
It's crazy.
So, but if we do this today, we're locked.
Yes. Yes, sir.
I know you're a distance away from doing this.
Yes.
When we do it.
Yeah, the base paving's going down today on the lower parking lot, so that is happening as we speak. And that's a great question, Commissioner, because as I know with the fluctuality of where things are, you know, I needed as up-to-date ticker tape type of pricing as there was. And as speaking with them yesterday, that's, it's good, so.
That was your birthday present, seeing it was a great question, so.
Can we get a better price from the contractor? I mean, they've been the ones deteriorating the parking lot faster, running across it with heavy equipment. Tell them to cut us a break, split the difference.
Yeah. It's, that's certainly part of construction. I, I can't, I can't say, I, I wouldn't say that, that's, in this case, if, if we gave them a brand-new parking lot that didn't have the alligator cracks that allowed the water to flow through, I, I think that construction equipment wouldn't have caused as much damage. So, I mean, you know, we could, we could say we probably should have over, over, you know, did a mill and overlay before we started the, the construction. So, I mean, there's a lot of ways.
Possibility. I, I don't know. Have you asked?
No, we have not asked for, on that, but I.
Pretty much know what the answer's going to be.
Yeah. Mr. Burdine, that was a good point. I'm wondering, did our staff pick on, pick up on this initially and go to the contractor, or did a contractor pick up on it and bring it to us?
We.
Our staff recognized.
Kirk and I and John met on-site, and we were looking at it, and we decided, yeah, originally we thought we could do a mill and overlay, but this just doesn't look like we should do that.
Well, that's reassuring to me because I have concerns that sometimes a contractor can get into a job and recognize such as cost increases and bring back a revision to cover up their shortcomings. But your reply reassured me that that did not happen, so thank you.
So moving the money on options two and three, and that's kind of where we're leaning towards. Deb, I see you're here, and there's a 2 Alpha, 2 Bravo, 3 Alpha, 3 Bravo. I think we're going to get into an agreement of option three. Is there a recommended from you on how to move the money?
It's on option, look on the second.
I know, but there's a 3A, 3B.
Okay.
Yes, we, we have funds in our general government unallocated account that can, we can easily move into this project if you choose to, if you choose option two or three.
So you think that's the best approach in moving money?
Yes.
Okay.
So 3A is what you're looking at?
Yep. So I'll move the Board of Commissioners' approved resolution, CTAC 23.03, to transfer 161,360 from general government unallocated to Charles Carroll Community Center.
Second.
Got a motion, I got a second. Any further discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against.
Okay, 4-1. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Gentlemen.
So we had to do option, the first motion first.
Now that you got the money, let's put some blacktop down.
Yeah. Running out of time.
You'll see some today if you drive up.
Oh, I see. So it's 3A, the first step, and 3B.
Now we got a blacktop.
Got it. Move the Board of County Committee, I apologize, directed Bureau of Building Construction to accept the change order for option three to remove and replace the existing parking lot at the Charles Carroll Community Center in the amount of 161,360 on the upper parking lot at the Charles Carroll Community Center.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against.
Okay. I apologize.
You're good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about Carroll County Resource Recovery Park Conceptual Design and Northern Landfill Expansion Master Plan, RFP. It starts with good morning and it's good afternoon. So you're already.
Oh, it is already. Okay. I do have a Cliff's Note version of this so we can do a little more quickly if needed. But good morning, commissioners. Uh, thank you for having us today. Now, we're here today to discuss the proposals that we've received for development of the Northern Landfill Master Plan uh, and to request concurrence to proceed with service agreements for the project. Now, we're joined here today by Mr. Andrew Kays, uh, and John Schott of the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority. Andrew's the executive director. Uh, and John is the primary project manager. He's also the one that's been the project manager for all the current contracts that we have. Both of them were very instrumental in getting us to this point. Uh, your purchase of land recently surrounding Northern Landfill has really changed the focus uh, and the future, allowing us to pursue the goal of a generational sustainable solution for our fund. That's really what this, you know, project is all about. Uh, it gets us going down that path. And funds for the master plan are included in the current CIP project. Uh, so everything that we're discussing today, uh, is currently funded. There we go. So on April first of twenty twenty-two, in concert with the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority, an RFP was issued for developing the comprehensive master plan, uh, for the property of Northern Landfill. Now, the RFP's scope included, among other things, a thorough evaluation of the acquired three hundred and twenty-six acres. We really want to know what we can put where and what we can't put where. Uh, the Northern Landfill Expansion, which would extend the life of the facility, but also give us future options. Again, just because we may have permitted airspace in the future, doesn't mean we have to use it, but it's better that we do have it. Uh, new transfer station location and design, and we've been down that road before as to why that's needed. Uh, consolidated homeowner use area for residential, uh, drop off of waste and recyclables. Uh, as you likely know, today we have two separate facilities, one of which is not in good shape. Uh, scale house and maintenance shop, both of which will be in the new footprint, uh, of the future landfill. Uh, potential entrance and internal roadway improvements, uh, potential for rail access. We definitely want to do a deep exploration on that. Uh, and a Resource Recovery Park conceptual layout, which would enable us to pursue options beyond what we do today. And we never know what's going to come down the pike from the state. Better to try to be ahead of it than behind it. So in response to the RFP, we received five best and final proposals, uh, from consultant teams. Now, the primary responders are on this list, but each one, uh, brought to the table a team of consultants, additional planners, et cetera. Those, uh, five, five proposals were received from ARM Group, Columbia, Maryland, EA Engineering, Science and Technology of Hunt Valley, GeoSynTech Consultants, Columbia, Maryland, SCS Engineers, Columbia, Maryland, uh, and Tetra Tech with offices in Germantown. So each of the consultants does have a local presence to one degree or another. These proposals were evaluated by a review team consisting of staff from both the authority and from Carroll County DPW. Given the depth and breadth of the proposal and our goals in this project, a scoring system was set up to emphasize the offering team's technical proposal, which includes qualifications, experience, and their proposed work plan to get us to the goals that we want. So eighty percent of the review score was based on that technical proposal. In fact, during the review, we looked at the technical proposal before we even looked at the cost proposal. We didn't want to be prejudiced one way or the other, uh, based on their cost. The remaining twenty percent, uh, is related to cost, including staff billable rates and also their proximity to the county. We want to make sure that people are nearby or, or preferably nearby who can work on the project. So the review team evaluated the technical proposals independently and essentially came up with the following scoring. So based on the evaluations, one through five is, is the bottom line ranking. We didn't want to get into small score minutia that way. But essentially the review team, uh, is rec, has recommended that EA Engineering and Technology uh, as the one most likely to deliver the best overall value to Carroll County in this project. EA's comprehensive detailed work plan, combined with the very experienced team that they have assembled for this project, is believed to best address the stated RFP goals. One thing I want to keep in mind, again, this is not a lump sum contract. The tasks will take the hours that the tasks will take in order to become a comp, get accomplished. And only actual work will be expended and billed. The bottom line is this is a very large multi-year effort across three hundred and twenty-six acres of property. And we believe this deep, deep dive effort is needed from the start to deliver and all, deliver, develop, I'm sorry, and ultimately deliver a sound, long-term plan, which of course is our stated goal. And the next steps from here, after a discussion, I'm sure, uh, the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority Board of Directors did meet in October uh, and also approved EA, recommended EA contingent on Carroll County's decision. So it really is all up to us. Uh, the other reason that was done in October is if I'm not mistaken, there's no November meeting. And we wanted to try to make sure we put this, uh, this recommendation before this board, before the end of the current session. If the Board of County Commissioners concurs, uh, the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority would finalize the master plan service agreements with the consultant in the county by the end of November. And the consultant would hit the ground running in December. And at this time, the entire team here can answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I like the amount of effort that's been put into this. I know how important it is to your department. It's a, uh, it's a tough pill to swallow seeing that would go to the highest contractor, but there obviously has to be some reasoning in this. And sometimes you see contractors don't fully understand the scope of the work that's requested and potentially things overlooked. But I'd really like to hear something from the authority to chime in on this, to back up this avenue you want us to go on, to reassure us that this is the right decision to make because there's only some backlash potentially from the citizens about awarding to the highest bidder. It kind of defies what we're used to. But there's logic behind that. I'd love to hear it from the professionals in the authority.
Sorry if I come up.
Sure.
Thank you.
You do it, Troy.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Thank you again. My name is Andrew Kays. I'm with the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority. The approach that the RFP process allows us to take is to build what we think is the best overall proposal for a project. And so as Cliff mentioned, we did look at the technical approach, the technical qualifications and the approach that each of the vending team, the contractor teams looked at. And we independently, and then as we discussed, came together and realized, and, and came to the conclusion that EA presented what we felt was the best understanding of what the project wants to be as it was explained by Carroll County. Uh, so it, it was, uh, recognizing the complexity of the project. I mean, it's a big opportunity with the property that you have and then the breadth of services that you're seeking. And then EA was able to drill in to their proposal and really present a solid understanding, at least an understanding that we felt was very akin to our understanding of what we were saying we wanted, uh, for the county. It is, uh, different than, uh, a typical bid process, which usually goes qualifications, then lowest price. The RFP process allows that flexibility where we're not governed by lowest price, where we may see, uh, change orders, but rather we can look at the narrative around the wording for each of the tasks to make sure that what is being offered as a recommendation meets our needs. And I apologize, I'm saying our, the county's needs.
It's our, we're a team.
And if I may, Commissioners, I'd like to add just a little bit to that. Um, I think, I think it's all four, I know it's all four of our, um, opinions that the team that was presented, the, the actual people that will be working on this, the, the consultants, the sub consultants that were, that were proposed. Uh, we felt this team was far and above the best team that was, that was, uh, uh, proposed to them.
One of the things as well, when Andrew was mentioning about, you know, depth of understanding and depth of how to attack the work plan, that directly translates into the number of hours that are, you know, proposed by each of the, the consultant teams. Uh, there was a significant difference in amount of hours. Uh, and we believe directly resulting in a difference in amount of effort, you know, that may be put forth, uh, into the project. Uh, in some cases significantly. Those two, those two items combined, the hours that were proposed and also, uh, the subcontractors, uh, you know, one or two in particular who are very, very well-versed and experienced in the things that they do. For example, EA, one of their, their primary subcontractors, GBB, so Gerschman, Brechner, Bratton, they are probably the preeminent solid waste planner or one of them in, in the country. And they do international work as well. They were involved in landfill work out in Guam a bunch of years ago to resolve issues that were out there. Uh, so the combination of those two, quality, quality comes with a price. Uh, but the combination of those two differences, difference in hours and the strength of the team, I think is the biggest reason that we see, you know, those, uh, the, the price difference that we see. This isn't a, these are not disparaging comments on any of the, the companies that have proposed to this. They're all good. Uh, they have all either done work or will do work at some point in time, uh, for Carroll County, uh, for solid waste or for Tetra Tech in particular has worked on our wastewater end. Uh, so they are all known quantities from that standpoint. Uh, they are all on calls with the Northeast Authority. We have a list of twelve on-call engineering contractors. So again, it's nothing disparaging on, on them at all or, or the effort they put forth. It's just, again, depth of understanding, you know, on their end and the, uh, the work plan that was put forth. We couldn't tell them how many holes to go drill in a field. You know, we, here's what we want, how do we get there? That's their way of telling us, here's what we need to do to get there.
Yeah.
Again, it doesn't mean that that's the cost that's going to come in. If a contractor proposed five thousand hours for a project and it comes in at ten thousand, we have to pay ten thousand hours. Likewise, or counterwise, if they come in with, say, it's ten thousand, it comes in at five, there's five thousand hours we're not paying.
Yeah.
So it is not lump sum not to, it is not to exceed. It is not lump sum. So we will only be charged for what, uh, uh, work is done. And that's incumbent on our team too, to understand and follow what each step work of the work plan is, uh, keep on top of the contracts and make sure we're getting the deal that we're supposed to be getting.
Makes a lot of sense. Appreciate all the homework you just said and, uh, that you've done. Um, you know, uh, when you make the sale, stop selling.
Well, you know, when you look at it, Ed.
Yeah.
The top three are only about two hundred thousand, uh, apart anyway. And when you're talking about a four million dollar contract.
Yeah.
Eh, it's, what's two K? I mean, you know. So, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for Andrew, you and your team. Uh, you've, in the eight years, back in twenty fourteen, I said northeast waste or Maryland waste, what, what, what do they, what do they do? Uh, but you've certainly proven what you've done over the last eight years that several of us have been here. And, uh, if you're in on this, I think it's, um, it's a good direction to be going in because you've, uh, been incredibly, I think you've, you've been an incredible player in this. And, uh, we're going to be watched because, uh, in, in the state of Maryland right now, in my travels with Mako and the BMC, the colleagues have come up to me and said, y'all got three hundred and how many acres for what? How in the heck did you get that? So we're going to be watched on this and, uh, I'm going to use a phrase from one of my really good colleagues, we need to get this right.
Except, except for that Loyola pin. So, you know, just, just saying, but.
In my apologies, I.
We'll leave it alone. Just, we'll leave that alone.
I'm going to make the motion, we authorize a contract with the North, Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority for the Carroll County Resource Recovery Park Conceptual Design and Northern Landfill Expansion by EA Engineering and Technology of Hunt Valley at the not to exceed value of four point one, seven, seven, nine forty-nine and ninety-four cents.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further?
Yeah, just Deb, this money's allocated how?
During the budget process, you put, uh, twenty-nine million dollars into the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund in a capital project. We've used it for land acquisition and we have fifteen point eight million dollars remaining. So those funds would pay for this.
Okay. And that's not the number the authority needs to use. Understand that.
Very clear on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, wait a second. Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? Seeing here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay.
See you.
Chris, any, uh, comments on the phone?
No one waiting on the line, sir.
And unless Mr. Bokey wants to make a public comment, which I don't think he does.
Dodging nose.
I know he is dodging nose. Um, anything for open admin? I need approval of the closed minutes from ten twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, legal advice and potential litigation. Please take a look.
Motion to approve minutes from ten twenty-seven.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Come on up, Wanda. Let's look at agendas. Good morning.
Morning.
Or afternoon for that matter.
Afternoon.
Yes. November seventh, we have nothing scheduled. Tuesday, November eighth, I will be attending the Ag Center Board Meeting that evening. On Wednesday, November ninth, uh, there's a Veterans Day event at Westminster Senior Center at nine AM. Put it on my calendar as an FYI, if I can make it there.
Okay.
That'd be nice. Um, because I'll already be up there at twelve for a salute to service luncheon. Um, with Commissioner Weaver over at, uh, post thirty-one. And then I'll be attending, I guess I'll be in Westminster all day, the Board of Education meeting at five PM. Reminder, Tuesday, November eighth is the time to vote. If you don't early vote by November third or, uh, mail-in ballot. So November eighth.
Like today for early voting?
Election day is what?
Today for early voting by eight o'clock.
By eight o'clock is the last day today. Eight or seven?
Pretty sure it's eight.
Okay. On Thursday, November tenth, we open session at nine and.
How many of these we got left?
Transition of Historic Preservation, stop that, Commission to Planning Committee, Adoption of Chapter Thirty-four Ethics Ordinance Amendments, which will be questioned as these two have sidebars. Carroll County Wet Water Resources Element Update, CIS Endpoint Security Services Renewal. And Mr. Ripper, he'll be up talking about that, along with the Laserfish Annual Support Renewal. Twenty twenty-two Pipe Culvert and Storm Drain Rehabilitation. We haven't heard that in a while. Traffic Engineer, not sure what that's specifically.
It's a contract. We have a contract with Traffic Engineer. It's a renewal of the contract.
So it'll be dealing with the contract for the Traffic Engineer from DPW. Change building remodeling of two staff restrooms. Looking forward to that conversation. Um, installation of residential water meter vaults on Beesman Road, Hawkins Street, Obreck Road and Caracara Court down my area. Purchase of the Liebert Heating and Cooling Unit and a first quarter FY twenty-three budget update and fourth quarter of FY twenty-two results from Mr. Zaleski. At four PM, uh, retirement party for Ms. Auerbach over at, uh, the Elks Lodge in Westminster. Commissioner Boucher will be attending. The Goodwill Industries of Monocacy has a, uh, event hosted by the Platoon Veteran Services Center at the, at the Goodwill. I'll be attending that. And then Commissioner Boucher, Lance Weaver and I will be attending the Recreation Parks Volunteer of the Year Program at six thirty PM over at the Art Center. Friday, November eleventh, the offices will be closed for Veterans Day. Gerstel, uh, will have a Veterans Day event where Commissioner Weaver, I thought you were attending also.
Yeah, I'm attending that as well.
Commissioner Frazier and Weaver are both attending. And then I will be attending the Westminster American Legion Veterans Day Program at four PM. Um, and I know that we just received, uh, information on the public schools, uh, activities that are happening on Veterans Day. So we can all take a look, um, for that Friday. Saturday, November twelfth, Land Resource, Land and Resource Management Environmental Symposium, Commissioner Boucher and Frazier attending the Fall History Day Celebrating America, uh, will be over at the Exploration Commons. And I will be attending that.
I, I will try to attend both of them that morning and split them up.
On Sunday, Commissioner Weaver or Vance has the.
No, it's Weaver.
It's Weaver.
Actually, we changed that. I did this week.
What I thought.
France.
So Commissioner Vance.
Him.
So Commissioner Vance will be giving his farewell.
Wait, what?
You're doing this week.
Okay, on Monday.
Do it right.
November fourteenth. So in other words, he's been doing it wrong for the last eight years, is what you're saying.
What now?
He's been doing it wrong for the last eight years.
Well, if you take that into it, you, you know, he hadn't done it the Weaver way.
Boy, the Weaver way.
Using small words, transit adv- Using small words. Transit Advisory Council on Monday, November fourteenth, three PM, Commissioner Frazier will be attending. Tuesday, November fifteenth, Libraries Legislative Breakfast, Commissioner Boucher is attending. I will also be attending that. It's over at the Exploration Commons. There's a Local Management Board, Commissioner Frazier is attending. The Planning Commission Board, which will be downstairs, Commissioner Vance will be attending. And then there's Veterans Advisory Meeting that Commissioner Weaver and I will be attending. Please get with Vivian. There's activity over at the CCYSB that morning that I'm going to be attending, participating in. Please, Wanda. Wednesday, November sixteenth, Commission on Aging Disabilities, I will be participating, so virtual at ten AM. The Carroll Community College Board of Trustees Meeting over at the college, Commissioner Vance and I, I'm attending that, too. I don't know, maybe. I didn't know that. ESAC, the Emergency Services Advisory Council, Commissioner Vance will be participating in that from seven PM to twelve PM, or twelve in the morning. Thursday, November seventeenth.
Pretty close.
We have open session. FY twenty-two Audit and Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Employment Campus Solar Text Amendment Discussion, I one and C two, Industrial One and Commercial Two Districts Text Amendments Discussion. And then we're going to talk about exercising option to purchase for the Christopher Sternor property through the Rural Legacy Program. Awesome. And then we talk about purchasing radios from Mr. Campbell, Department of Public Safety. I will not be here that morning on the seventeenth. I will be participating in the Fort Meade Coon Hall Education Resiliency Center Ribbing Cutting. And it's at Fort Meade. So, Walk in the Park, wait a second, is this Thursday, I guess?
Yes, I have the same situation as you. I won't be in session that morning. I want to let people know that that Walk in the Park will have a food drive as well. So, anyone wants to attend can donate food.
And then there was three.
And there was three. Okay. Let's.
We can handle it. After eight years, I think we can take it.
Okay.
As are the veterans.
Five thirty PM, there's the Maryland, it's RMI, it's the Manufacturing Celebration, and it's bidding farewell to a very good man and public servant, Mr. Mike, oh my gosh, Mike G. All of a sudden, I forgot his name. Anyway, I'll just say Mike for now.
To the best of us.
Awesome. Mike. I don't know.
Friday, November eighteenth, but I will be attending that in March West.
For somebody.
Wow. Saturday, November nineteenth, there's a road sign dedication to Tech Sergeant Joseph A. Ferrenhalts. And at the American Legion, Commissioner Weaver will be attending. And then at five PM, there's a Sober Truth and Chrysalis Transitional Living Black Light Spectacular Family Dinner.
That's a lot.
The Trinity Church over in Tawny Town, Commissioner Boucher and Frazier will be attending.
One addition.
Is that really my name?
November ninth.
Crazy.
November ninth at nine thirty, Farm Museum Board.
I'll be going. Crazy. All these years.
And then Commissioner Frazier has the podcast for.
Farewell Podcast with Commissioner Frazier.
Sunday, November twentieth.
Tune in.
Okay. We don't go into close, we go into adjournment or?
No. For whatever reason, it's not in our books agenda. It's on the public agenda. And yes, we have a close for land acquisition. You asked for.
Okay, I need a motion to.
We should go to the close for land acquisition. How's that?
That's good. Second.
Motion second.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
All discussion? Any discussion? Seeing here, none all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn after land acquisition. Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.